Sitting for him. Commissioner Monahan is not here yet, but hasn't. First item in business is meeting minutes from November 18th and December 2nd. Have a motion on the item. Commissioner Braun.
I would make a motion to segregate the two.
We can just segregate them. So we'll take meeting minutes from November 18th. Have a motion on that.
A motion to approve that.
Do you have a second, Commissioner Braun? Commissioner Capozzi, seconds. Any comments?
Consider that they're accurate.
Commissioner Capozzi. Any comments? Any other comments from the Commission? Put this to vote, all those in favor of the motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 18th. Raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting minutes for December 2nd. On that item. Commissioner Seibert. Second, Commissioner Capozzi, seconds. Any comments?
I have some comments.
Comments, Commissioner Braun?
I did not draft the minutes and I did not see them before they were distributed or filed. And I would ask that going forward. Follow Robert's rules, which is set forth in the first. So as a secretary, I know I don't set the agenda, but I'm supposed to organize the agenda. And I'm supposed to be the responsible for the minutes. So I would ask that any minutes and agendas be provided to me. This is kind of a housekeeping matter beforehand. So I think there is an error in the minutes from December 2nd because I had made a motion to amend Commissioner Levy's motion to approve the P O C D. And I was stopped in the middle of my sentence. Commissioner Randolph made a motion to move the prior motion. I believe that was inappropriate because it was not done the right way. And I never got to conclude my motion. So that should be in the minutes and it's not in the minutes. So I would, I will be correcting the minutes. But would have done it the right way if I had had the minutes. So these drafts are done. Assist me as secretary to put forth the minutes. So I had no involvement in the minutes. I need, going forward, we need to do it the right way. So I need to get the minutes ahead of time so I can make it, make it accurately reflect all the motions that are made and all the actions that are taken. So the minutes should be amended to add my motion to amend Commissioner Levy's motion to approve the P O C D. Which was interrupted when Mr. Randolph made a motion to move the prior motion. And I was not, there was nothing on the floor yet for that to lie to. And therefore that was an improper motion. The minutes need to be modified to reflect that. So I'm making a friendly, I guess, actually, I'm going to make the motion, ask if it's seven seconds to my making a motion to amend the minutes to add that change to the minutes.
Can you? I guess we can. I guess we can handle this at the motion pattern, but if it does, can you supply the, your motion that you were?
Yes, I watched, I can do that, yeah.
Commissioner Braun moves to amend the meeting minutes to reflect she introduced to amend. Commissioner Monahan seconds that motion. Any additional comments?
Well, my comments are basically what I said, which is I made a motion to amend the motion to approve for a variety of reasons. And, you know, it was the O C D was shot properly reflected on the agenda. Going forward, we will have some action associated with something. And all the agenda said was P O C D with nothing. It didn't notify anybody about it. And there was a variety of reasons that I mentioned that night why the P O C D needed modification changes. We had new commissioners. There was no time for them to review. No, none of their comments were allowed to go into this process. And now that we adopted it twice, our Commission wasn't even in agreement on whether we needed to re-adopt it a second time. So we had a town attorney saying we didn't adopt it the first time on October 7th. And I agreed with the town attorney that we had the rest of the Commission here, except for Commissioner Monahan and I. Felt we already adopted it, but yet they voted to adopt it again a second time. So it creates chaos and confusion. And now we have a P O C D that's on file at the State Office of O P M. That's still, and on our town website, that still says October 7th, even though we adopted it again on December 2nd. The date matters because the state tracks, you know, when the next one is due, based on when this one was filed. So we need to clarify some of these things. And I think the minutes should reflect some of this. And this Commission needs to decide which date did we adopt it? October 7th or December 2nd?
Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Monahan, comments?
I agree. Yes, it was never presented to me and I would have liked to have more discussion on it, to go over relevant points about data in it before it was.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy.
I mean, the motion is to amend the minutes. And, you know, that's fine, but I think when the minutes are amended, or if they are amended, it should be factual and it should be nonjudgmental. Things like judgments as to whether something was proper or improper. Appropriate in the minutes. So, I mean, for instance, there was a motion made to reaffirm the P O C D. There was a motion made by Attorney Braun. And then ultimately the motion was made to move forward on the initial motion. And that's basically what should be in the minutes. Any other questions should be, you know, it's all there on Fair TV. I don't think we need, you know, recitations of, you know, people's various opinions and so forth, which should just be a factual recitation of the motions made and what occurred.
Commissioner Braun, is that what you're?
Yeah, I'm moving to amend the minutes to add my motion to amend Commissioner Levy's motion to approve the P O C D. Which was not included in the minutes, possibly because interruption which was allowed by Commissioner Randolph on a motion that was not timely, that was not made at the appropriate time, prevented a second. So that should be in the minutes.
Understood.
My motion should be in the minutes.
Understood, I just wanted to clarify that.
And Commissioner Randolph's motion should be in the minutes and the vote on all that should be in the minutes.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Not who said what, but, yeah.
I would, I would actually support that argument.
Thank you.
Can I?
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I'm just going to ask a clarification question on behalf of our work as well. So if I can clarify your request, what you're asking for is something that simply states Commissioner Braun made a motion to modify the P O C D. That motion was not seconded.
No, I made a motion to amend the motion to approve and Commissioner Randolph made a motion to move the question or whatever that motion is. And that, I believe, was voted on and then the P O C D was approved. Yes.
So your inserted part is that you made a motion to amend the approval.
To amend the motion to approve, that Commissioner Levy.
And Commissioner Randolph's motion. So I guess you're just looking for an, a record of all the motions and the, and the result of those motions.
Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
Commissioner Levy.
We should table this, get it drafted, resubmit it.
Absolutely. Totally agree.
So I will ask for, will you withdraw this motion? And I'll ask for motions postponed. We're going to also address how we're doing motions to table. Phone, but that's another issue.
I understand that too.
Yeah.
I've been reading Robert's rules.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so you withdraw your motion.
I withdraw a motion on the basis that we will revisit this or we will postpone.
I'll ask for, yeah, I'll ask for motion to postpone the consideration of the minutes from December 2nd to our next regular.
Thank you.
Have someone, Commissioner Levy?
Postpone.
As if everyone agrees. So we'll postpone this.
And may I add a few housekeeping matters? I have one housekeeping matter that we haven't discussed yet. We've already talked about the budget informally. That can be done off record, you know.
Yes.
And then we just talked about minutes preparation. The first planning agenda, it would be nice to hit the ground running. That is on January 6th. And I would just like to ask that the chairman, myself and staff get together to figure out what should be on it and that we solicit input from the commissioners. Then we perhaps even get, because now this is an extra meeting every month. We perhaps even get a staff report back on things that might be useful for us as we move forward with planning. Like, for example, how many applications come in that don't come to see it, come to us? Like ADUs or five plexes, four plexes, duplexes, outreach, training opportunities, revenue intake, things that the Conservation Commission has when they have their report back by their staff. I thought it would be nice to put that on the agenda for the planning session when we're not rushed to handle regulatory matters.
I would say if there is, if there are requests for information to be presented, those should be submitted to Director Harrigan and myself through email. Sometimes they may be appropriately reported in the planning meetings. And sometimes those may be better presented at regular meetings.
Well, we have, we have state laws going into effect potentially in January that we need to immediately start planning how to deal with. So we need to make sure that.
I expect those will certainly be on the agenda.
So, yeah, so I would like to participate in helping to put together the agenda. I realize it's chairman's responsibility, but.
I'm always open to, I mean, input from other members as well on, on things that you might want to see on agendas. So feel free to reach out offline on that and we can discuss.
And if, if I could also add, one of the things that we were hoping to be able to do for the January 6th meeting, given that we had presented some of the zoning enforcement staff requested changes, was to actually schedule that first date as a public hearing so we could get some public comment and Commissioner feedback on those zoning enforcement officer requested changes.
And actually, part of, that's a great idea. And also, part of maybe a staff report could be what kind of enforcement activity do we see? Because we don't hear about that much and it would be nice to hear about when enforcement matters. Conservation has that as their staff report back once a month on their conservation agenda, not the regulatory agenda. So that would be nice to hear back on what, what's going on on behalf of our Commission.
Okay. I have something to add. I would also like to see a list of all the eight thirty G applications that have been approved, the ones that are not yet constructed. I'd like to know if there are any pending applications, if any. I know some are coming forward tonight. It was closed as I've been going on, but apparently not. I'd like a list of all of the multifamily homes in town that did not come forward toward this, this Commission. And that would have, you know, just desk review, as well as the list of use throughout the town and so on and so forth. I think as we go forward and try to plan for further developments in town, it would be nice to know what we've already agreed to. Document with a map.
I know this information, I've seen, I've seen it circulated in the past. I would, I would, I'm sorry.
Informally.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think that's the proper way to request this information to Director Harrigan.
Can I, can I clarify? I did, so I did a presentation to the Legislative, the Majority Leader's Working Group on Housing. And I believe I forwarded that presentation to the Commission members and it included at least related to eight thirty G, a lot of the information that you're asking for. I can't recall whether I forwarded that before or after the election. So I don't, does this, I'm seeing blank stares from Commissioner Capozzi and it's not sounding familiar to you.
I don't have it or I wouldn't have asked, but I also.
I can forward that to you.
Anything that doesn't come, you know, that's multifamily, that's not coming, you know, in front of this Commission, as well as anything pending. So it would be nice to know what's been approved, how many, where they are, have they been built, have they not been built? And so on and so forth, as we accordingly to further develop.
Are you asking us to go back from the time that we've issued permits for duplexes, four plexes?
Yeah, I think it would be reasonable to have. It would be reasonable to have a discussion as to what already exists in town.
I can ask for that information from the assessor, I think.
You should have it.
Okay. And that would be not just eight thirty Gs, that would be any multifamily. We have a number of other multifamily that have been approved, not built yet, you know, that we seen, we don't know they exist yet, but they might be in process, they might be built. It would be nice to know where they might be because that would help us feed into our planning as we go forward, to know what, what's already been approved in this neighborhood.
I mean, I think these, I think these are fair requests. I don't think we need to have these taking up a meeting. I think Director Harrigan's very good about sharing this information whenever it's requested. You know, these are, I know, I've seen these requests plenty of times before. The information's always, always provided. So I would suggest that we, that we. Request that information.
So you have this already, this information?
We've, I mean, it's probably, there's probably an updated version, but I, but these are the kinds of things that are circulated from time to time. So.
It all should be posted. I think it's important that it's in the community.
I'm not aware of any master repository of all multifamily housing in our town that's either approved.
Specifically exists.
Not approved, under construction, not filled, C O V issued. Like, we have the moratorium list, obviously. That's one list that has affordable housing, but there could be others that are, that are different. You know, like Stonebridge is a multifamily. I don't think there's any affordable there, you know. So there could be multifamily in random places that did not end up on the moratorium list. And actually, there is stuff that predated eight dash thirty G that would not be on the moratorium list, but that exists in our, in our town. So it would be nice if we had one master repository, so.
Agreed, but let's, you know, if we, if we're not able to get the information that folks are looking for, we can address it again. But otherwise, let's make your request by email.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
They could be provided. Okay, next item in business is applications to recommend to public hearing. We have one this time, thirty-two thirty-two Post Road, special exception application of Atlantis Management Group to expand an existing convenience store as part of a gas station use in a design commercial district. Gentlemen. This is Commissioner Braun. Thank you, Commissioner Braun, just to recommend to public hearing. Commissioner Levy, seconds. Any additional comments?
No.
Thank you. Other comments by the Commission? Required straightforward. Can we put this motion to recommend to a public hearing? So if all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item in business, compliance application. Twenty-three seventeen Black Rock Turnpike, apply its application at Fairfield Woods Plaza for a change in use from takeout restaurant to the Pilates studio in a multi-tenant shopping plaza, designed commercial district zone.
So twenty-three seventeen Black Rock Turnpike, it's per the zoning regulations, when there's a change in use, there's a compliance application before the Commission. This was a former takeout restaurant subway in a multi-tenant, two-story mixed-use building. And they are requesting to convert that to a Pilates studio. The proposed tenant fit up is on the ground floor level, which is twenty-six thousand one hundred fifty-three square feet, facing the Black Rock Turnpike. There is seventy-two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine square feet lower level, which is primarily medical and office uses. The site includes two hundred and twenty-two parking spaces, which provides a ratio of one space for every approximately two hundred square feet. And parking is located behind the building. Oops, that's in the wrong place. Parking is, is satisfactory for the plaza and we don't anticipate any impacts from the proposed change of use.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Levy moves to approve. Can I have a second? Commissioner Seibert? Commissioner Levy, comments?
Yeah, fairly straightforward and looks like it's a good use.
Thank you, Commissioner Seibert.
Comments, I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun, I'm sorry.
I have a question about, about the parking. It says includes two hundred and twenty-two parking spaces, a ratio of one for every one ninety-three. Has anything changed about the parking needs? Or does this completely satisfies our parking requirements right now?
For multi-tenant buildings, this is something I think the Commission has to talk through a bit. And this is something that I would recommend that we discuss further when we get into the zoning regulation requirements. Multi-tenant buildings are always a little challenging because we do kind of make an assumption as to what's going to be in the plaza. Over time, as the tenant mix starts to change, our zoning enforcement staff will look at it and determine whether or not that change of use is similar to what's existing in place, or whether there's been a change of use that triggers, that we kind of relook and see whether or not we believe the parking mix to be satisfactory based on the tenant mix. I do think that, you know, when you have a multi-tenant plaza that tends to be very restaurant-heavy, that that's where you end up with having, you know, parking issues that might not, that where you might end up with a short supply based on, you know, similar hours of demand for the uses. In this particular plaza, because there's a mix that, that tends to work for the number of parking spaces available, we felt like this plaza has an adequate parking supply and there's not really any need for additional parking spaces. And that ratio works for this plaza, given the current tenant mix. However, I mean, if we're talking about future planning and what you guys want to consider, for example, in some plazas, you know, you may want to limit the total proportionality of restaurant. This isn't a restaurant-heavy plaza, so, you know, it's not a huge generator of parking spaces.
This is a bagel place in Cold Stone Creamery. Is the one, the medical building is behind it?
There's lower level office spaces that are for lease. And so some of them are office, some of them are medical. There's medical facing the Black Rock Turnpike side as well, as well as other, you know, a mixture of other uses.
Is there any, there's residences on top? No residences, okay. I thought it said mixed use, that meant residences.
No, well, it's a mixture of restaurant, it's a mixture of uses.
I always consider mixed use having residential mixed in.
Doesn't have to be.
Okay, okay.
Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve? Raise your hand. Your motion to approve carries unanimously. Next item is fifty-eight Post Road, compliance application of fifty-eight Post Road B R G LLC for a change in use from a hair salon to a takeout restaurant in a seven hundred square foot tenant space in a mixed-use building in a designed commercial district zone.
So this, this particular property is as the, you know, as you go approach the municipal boundary to Fairfield Avenue. And this is a change of use from a former hair salon to a takeout restaurant, a flat-out burger in a mixed-use building, which is primarily a house with a small retail space at the corner. There's no seating proposed, given the limited square footage of seven hundred square feet of this retail commercial space. There's also not an increase in the parking calculation for the proposed use from the former salon. Parking is located behind the building off Grassmere Avenue with a single space off of the. is located behind the building off Grassmere Avenue with a single space off of the Post Road. Alternatively, this is an area where on-street parking is located within the general vicinity, and we don't, given the limited amount of square footage for this commercial use, we don't anticipate any impacts from the proposed change in use.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Can I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Bron?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Bron moves to approve. Commissioner Capozzi, seconds?
I just have a couple of questions. So can you explain the, I'm looking at the, the access and the egress, it's kind of a weird intersection right there.
This is a very old structure, so I think the structure is from nineteen eighteen, and so I suspect that this was kind of your traditional, you know, little commercial carve-out of a, of a single-family house, so it is tighter to the intersection, I think, than, you know, you'd see new developments end up being, and it has certain non-conforming, non-conforming characteristics to it, such as that parking space that's pretty close to the corner. Ideally, if you were going to build something today, you probably wouldn't have those kinds of features, but it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and so we're looking at whether or not there's a significant intensity in what's being requested, and as staff, we don't believe that there is.
So do they expect walk-in traffic from nearby residents?
Or on-street parking, you, you know, you order for takeout and then you pick it up, or Grubhub, for example.
Okay, and how many, I'm sorry, how many spaces are there associated with this?
There's not marked or delineated spaces because it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation where the-
Parking lot behind it is not?
It's kind of a, it's kind, what I would say is it's a tandem parking lot, so, you know, there's, you know, if, if there's quote-unquote "an employee," they're probably going to pull all the way in, and then somebody can pull behind, but it's not, it's, it's kind of more like a residential driveway in its, in its, in its nature.
And how many spaces are there? Because I see a big parking lot behind it, but that's associated with the other building?
That's the other building that's adjacent.
Okay.
So that's not, that's not associated to this use.
So you don't think this would create a problem for?
No, because there, you know, it was a salon where there was appointment-based clientele, and, you know, there's, I think, a lot of these smaller uses are very neighborhood-serving.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Capozzi, any comments?
Yeah, wait, it seems like this is a, a structure that is sort of known in the community, that people are used to walking into, and I think the restaurant is a great use. It's a great restaurant, it's a great use for the building, so I, I would vote to approve.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Delgado?
I'm familiar with the building. I live about a block and a half from here, so I think it'd be exciting to see the building get used. There's plenty of other restaurants that don't have, still unparked, and it's kind of a little, you know, like a slow walk, so it's a great use. I'd like to see this building.
This motion to approve, to a vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously if it's approved. Thank you. Moving on to old business, next item is thirty fifteen Bronson Road, special exception application of Fairfield Country Day School LLC to construct an enclosure over an existing ice rink, construct a new athletic building, and add associated parking areas for an existing education facility in our residence AAA zone. Sorry.
You know, I would defer to the Commission, whether you, if it's helpful for me to read staff comments, whether you want to read those on your own. I think it's been, we have a new commission, so if it's helpful, I'm happy to read the staff comments.
You know what, I, I'll ask you to read them today because I did not request, make that request in advance, which was an oversight on my part, but moving forward, I'll, I'll remind folks to, to do that, and we can cut that out for the most part unless it's something especially complicated.
Okay. So for two-zero-four, oops, sorry, for, switch that. For three-zero-one-five Bronson Road, it's a special exception application. The three-hundred-eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-six square foot site is located in the residential AAA zone and is presently used as part of the operations of the West Campus of Fairfield Country Day School, and contains a seasonal ice rink with associated maintenance and storage buildings, tennis courts, a residential dwelling with a pool, a baseball field, and surface parking on existing open grassy areas. Tools are permitted in the residential AAA zone by special exception per section three-two-point-eight. The applicant proposes a roof structure over the existing ice rink to protect the ice from frequent melting due to warmer temperatures during the winter months. The rink is only used seasonally, and the applicant has indicated that this is not proposed to be changed. The applicant also includes, the application also includes a two-story athletic building with lockers, offices, fitness areas, restrooms, and viewing areas with an attached Zamboni storage and mechanical equipment building with associated driveways and walkways. The applicant also proposes a pervious patio area adjacent to the athletic building and new pervious pavour parking areas with forty-two parking spaces. The applicant has indicated that the site has access to public water and the septic system will be upgraded to accommodate the proposed uses. The application meets all lot coverage limitations of ten percent with eight-point-seven percent proposed. All buildings are below the forty-foot and three-story height limit, and all setback requirements are met. The applicant has proposed additional screening walls facing the neighboring properties to the south. There are onsite wetlands and a conservation easement in the southwest portion of the site. Enland Wetland staff-level review has been preliminarily provided for the proposal with a mitigation planting plan. Due to the distance from the upland review area for the areas of the construct, of the construction, full Enland Wetland Agency's review was not required. However, staff approval includes, preliminary approval includes extension of the split rail fence for demarcation of the, of an additional small wet area, soil erosion and sedimentation controls to delineate the conservation, to protect the conservation easement area and prevent any disturbance, and construction monitoring by a third-party environmental site monitor to ensure the easement area is not disturbed. The applicant provides two stormwater detention systems in addition to the onsite pervious pavement and patio areas to accommodate the stormwater runoff. The applicant's traffic consultant confirms that no new trips are proposed as a result of the proposed rink cover and associated athletic buildings, as no new programming or additional usage over existing use is proposed, including normal hours of operation with most athletic activities ending by six P M. The site driveway provides adequate site distances of four-hundred-and-thirty-four feet looking south and four-hundred-and-twenty-three feet looking to the north. There is limited crash history in the area, and the use does not negatively impact existing roadways. Landscaping is proposed to provide a buffer from the residential properties to the south. Preliminary meetings were held with the Historic District Commission and review before submittal, and review before this submittal, and should this project be approved by the TPZ Commission, full review by the HDC is required. Neighbor shared concerns about lighting, noise, and screening of the proposed new rink enclosure, as well as concerns that evergreen screening required as part of the original approval of the ice rink had not been installed. The relevant standard considerations for a special exception are as follows. Is the location type, character, and size of the use and buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage use of adjacent property or impair its value? Two, is the nature and location of the use and buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection? Three, are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry perspective traffic with provision made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue hazard to traffic or congestion, and has adequate provision been made for off-street parking? And four, is the proposed use in compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development? The applicant and staff at Fairfield Country Day School have continued to have dialogue with the adjacent neighbors, and the applicant has indicated that they are amenable to the following conditions to be added should the Commission approve the project. TPZ staff has reviewed these conditions and finds them appropriate to mitigate, to mitigate any anticipated impacts of the proposed project. Soil erosion, soil erosion and sedimentation controls shall be included on the site plan and installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction project at the subject site. Two, evergreen landscape buffer. The applicant agrees to plant a continuous evergreen buffer consisting of a minimum of thirteen trees within the side setback of the site along the southerly and westerly property lines to screen the facade of the proposed ice rink enclosure from neighboring properties subject to the approval of the Fairfield Conservation Department. These evergreens, a mix of white fir and giant arborvitae trees, will be a minimum of ten to twelve feet tall and field-located with neighbor input to address visibility lines of sight. Three, facade exterior, the applicant agrees the southern and western facade of the rink enclosure will be a natural wood appearance subject to the approval of the Fairfield Historic District Commission. Four, hockey usage, the applicant agrees hockey games will end no later than six-thirty P M. Five, lighting and sound reduction, the south end of the rink will be fully enclosed. The rink will include acoustic treatment to reduce sound levels. That's all I have on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan, and, and again, I'll, I'll try to remember to make this request by email in advance of future meetings, but I think you could see why we are going to refrain from having these staff comments read at the meetings, and so I'll just ask folks to, to please read these in advance of meetings so we can forego that. Can I have a motion on the item, please? Commissioner Levy?
Move to approve, conditions.
As stated in the staff comments. Commissioner Levy moves to approve with conditions to staff comments. Commissioner Capozzi, seconds.
Yeah, I mean, it's consistent with the existing use. It meets all the criteria for the special exception, and hopefully with the acoustic treatments, the evergreen landscape buffer, and the limitation upon use, it'll actually minimize any impact that the existing rink has with the neighbors, and I think it's consistent with, you know, our, you know, promoting, you know, the development of the wonderful educational facilities that we have in this town.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Capozzi, comments?
Well, I attended Fairfield Country Day, and I think they have a long history of really working with the town and being a powerful integrated community within the town itself. I think that, I was there when they built the original rink. I think that the, the structures look beautiful. I think that the sound mitigation is, is needed, and I live in the area, and I think that the plan is very sound. I know from my past history that people, when they go into the area that they park on the lawn, and which we heard when they presented, damaged the root system of the trees, so I think that the pervious parking that they have proposed is, is a very wise plan, and I think that the septic upgrade is also a wise plan, and I think we saw that they're very willing to work with the town and continue the dialogue and make this something that everyone feels good about. So with that, I, I strongly approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Monahan.
I echo both comments on this topic. I do believe as a real estate agent that the sound visual impact of the structure will impair the value of the adjacent property, if not properly screened. I don't believe that the trees that were selected, giant arborvitae trees, are the appropriate tree as a buffer. The deer eat them, and, you know, they potentially won't be around for as long as the adjacent property needs them for a barrier. Also, the white fir tree is incredibly slow-growing. I would like to propose something more in line with the white fir tree, and also a minimum of twelve feet, given they are incredibly slow-growing, and they should have a minimum of six feet of base, given the circumference of the base being very important for slow-growing trees. So to protect the neighbor, I mean that complaint, and given the past history of this project, it would be approved, I think that that would be, have some additional protections that the trees will denser and will be then.
Commissioner Monahan, you're moving to amend the motion to-
Just a friendly addendum, just to-
Require that-
Require that the trees not include arborvitae's, which are inexpensive and the deer love them, and also that they're taller, is twelve feet tall minimum versus ten to twelve, and also have six feet at the base. So they're nice, robust trees when they are planted.
A six-foot, got it, okay.
That's fair.
Commissioner Levy, to your motion?
Yeah, I don't know much about trees, so it's certainly amenable to having the appropriate trees there. When you say six-foot at the base, are you talking about a six-foot diameter, basically?
The circumference of-
The circumference is-
Yeah, but not the trunk.
Not the trunk, yeah. How we would make sense to make it, you know, trees that are deer-resistant and suitable, both in terms of the tree warden, neighbors, and the school, you know, let them figure it out.
Exactly.
Commissioner Capozzi?
I'd like to correct Commissioner Monahan. We moved into new construction. I'm very familiar with trees. Green giant arborvitae's are in fact deer-resistant. They grow about two feet per year. We put in about twenty of them in front of our house. The area where we put them is not fenced in, and we chose them specifically because they are deer-resistant. They're never eaten them. They've grown marvelously in the, over the past two and a half, three years that we've lived there. We installed twelve-to-fourteen-foot green giant arborvitae's. They're now well beyond sixteen feet tall in the three years. So I just wanted to clarify that green giant arborvitae's are in fact a very good choice, and they are deer-resistant.
I'd like to clarify, we installed about forty, and I just spent four-hundred-and-fifty dollars spraying them for the deer- eating base.
Commissioner Levy, I believe you had suggested wording it to require that the landscaping be deer-resistant.
Deer-resistant.
Being more specific on species, right, and then, and then the size requirement, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and you're okay with that language?
Sure.
Any objections? Okay, so the motion is amended. Motion, motion on the table is to approve with staff conditions and requirement that the landscaping plan include deer-resistant trees with a minimum size of twelve feet and six-foot diameter. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion as just stated, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item is, I'll call the next two items together, two-o-four Old Post Road Zone Change Application of R R I T LLC contract, contract purchaser to rezone the parcel located at two-o-four Old Post Road to the Design Residence District from Designed Industrial and Special Permit Application of R R I T LLC contract purchaser to construct four-two-unit townhouse buildings for a total of eight units with associated driveways, parking, and landscape areas in a designed industrial district zone.
The existing thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-forty-nine square foot site is presently zoned Design Industrial, and is located in Southport between the Post Road and the Old Post Road east of the Equinox Gym and west of Southport Park Preserve. And in October, the TPZ Commission approved a zoning regulation amendment to the Design Residence District for sites that are presently zoned Industrial to permit, permit middle-density applications for parcels that are at least one-half acre, one-half of an acre with no more than two parking spaces per unit and a shared driveway of twenty feet. The applicant proposes this zone change in this project via those regulations with eight townhouse units and four buildings. As discussed for prior similar applications, it's, it is appropriate to consider a zone change for the site as light industrial uses on pre-existing small parcels are not likely to have a viable future light industrial use proposal associated with them. TPZ staff does not find the proposed zone change inconsistent with the uses on adjacent parcels and does not anticipate that the D R D zone on a parcel of this size would likely, would be likely to result in public health or safety impacts. Standard considerations for the zone change portion of this application request, one, is the proposal consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development? Two, does time, experience, and reasonable, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for the proposed zone change? Three, have circumstances in the neighborhood changed substantially to warrant the requested zone change? Four, has it been demonstrated that the proposal is warranted and would serve the general health, welfare, and safety of the town? Five, does the proposed zone change promote a level of development that would serve to protect property values in the neighborhood and enhance the community, and accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character? And six, would the proposed zone change permit a level of development that would increase undue traffic congestion? For the special permit portion of the application, the site presently contains- the site presently contains two residential structures and a six bay service garage. The applicant proposes a multifamily residential development with eight townhouse units in the four buildings mentioned with the shared twenty foot wide driveway. Each townhouse building is proposed to meet the proposed D R D regulations with three stories and not to exceed forty feet in height. The proposed buildings meet the lot coverage limitation of thirty thirty percent with twenty-nine point seven percent coverage and floor area limitation of sixty percent with an F A R of fifty-eight point seven percent. The applicant has indicated that the site has access to public water and sewer. For the inland wetlands review, the engineering department has preliminary preliminarily approved the onsite detention system, which is located under the shared driveway. All patios located on the east side of the property has been have been provided as pervious. Concrete apron sidewalk and curbs are required, and the project adds a sidewalk in a pedestrian oriented area where none currently exists. There are offsite wetlands on the south part on the Southport Park property. The inland wetland agency approved this application, W P twenty-five dash zero one zero seven on nine nine three twenty twenty-five with conditions to rebalance the impervious areas with pervious pavers, modify the planting plan and the vegetated vegetated swale at the east property line by diversifying the arborvitae with native evergreen species and build the development with all dark sky compliant lighting. The proposed traffic generated on the site is anticipated to add four trips to adjacent roadways during the A M and P M peak hours and does not negatively impact traffic in the area. The relevant standard considerations for a special permit are as follows. Is the location type, character and size of the use and buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property or impair its value? Two, is the nature and location of the use and buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection? Three, are the building are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry perspective traffic with provision made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue hazard to traffic or congestion? And has adequate provision been made for off street parking? And four, is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation and development?
Thank you, Ms. Hargan, and I have a motion on the item, please.
I think it's a great looking building. I think it fits architecturally very well.
Sorry, can you just make your make a motion first? I'll come back to you for comment. Can I have a second? Second, sorry, go back back to you for comments.
Architecturally very nicely into the development. The lot overlooked park will be enhanced the park, enhance the entire area.
I agree, Commissioner, and says, I think that the current situation on that lot is unsightly, and I think this which is development. I also think that the foresight in adding elevators to each of the units. Most longevity in those units, which fosters longevity in the community, which I think is important.
Thank you. Other comments from the commissions? Commissioner Ron.
I think it's a great project. It's very attractive. It fits in their use and what's there now, and I appreciate the work they did with the conservation to enhance the wetlands mitigation plan, and also I believe this has Saskenog and Southport Conservancy approval because it's 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 a net benefit to the nearby park, so I totally support it.
Those comments, Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I can agree with my fellow commissioners' statements. It's nice to see a proposal with such attention to detail. And in particular, it's consistent with our recent amendment to the D R D in this area. I mean, the days of this being suitable for industrial use are long gone, and this is a much better use for the property.
One more. We seem to, and again, I'm new to the commission, so when we seem to prepare staff comments and also, you know, information for a review, you know, we'll put we'll write multifamily residential development. But it would be nice to add if it's a condominium, we don't have co-ops, if it's a co-op, we'll use an apartment building. So I think that that's important when we use the term multifamily residential development, whether it's a condominium or as an apartment. So I think it would be clarity for not only us, but also for the town residents.
Thank you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I could just clarify, sometimes we know, sometimes we don't know. And it's not within the purview of the commission to it's it's based in state law whether something can condoize later. So sometimes we, the applicant doesn't tell us whether it's for sale or whether it's rental. I believe in this circumstance, it is intended to be a for sale. But we we don't always know, and we don't have any control over what that means necessarily. It's all driven by state statute in terms of the, you know, how you set up those condos.
Thank you, Commissioner Bron.
I have a follow up question on that. And also, based on all of our prior discussions, it's really hard to do, there's no affordable here because it's under ten units.
That's correct.
Affordable required. But if there was, it would be very hard to do for sale because it's really hard to figure out how how much you pay for a purchase rather than for a rent. It's really hard to figure out.
Based on the calculation, it's hard to do. It's hard to maintain over time because there is.
Condos, you have common charges, you have mortgage.
Correct.
Taxes.
We've not had much success. Let me put it that way.
I don't think we have maybe two in the whole town, but but I have another follow up question on the new statute. You had mentioned that some of the eight oh oh two bill, which is now, I think called twenty-five, Public Act twenty-five dash one. Although I think there's two twenty-five dash ones, but aside from that, does the parking ban become effective in January? Like, we're doing this now, so that would not apply, right? But if it did apply, we're not allowed to require any off street parking or multifamily developments up to sixteen units. That's my understanding of the new law that was just passed. Does would would that apply to this? That would apply to this then? Now, they have off street park, they have parking on here, but that would apply. And when when does that go in, just so we know?
I don't know if you want to take care of your motion.
Well, that's a question I have, just how would it apply to something like this?
It would, but that doesn't, again, I think a municipality mandating a certain parking supply doesn't mean that a developer isn't going to propose a parking supply.
Which they did here, and which.
Which I think most, which I think most developers would.
Right, that that would not would not prevent. We could not.
It doesn't.
Reject it because of.
So if they had no parking, we couldn't reject it, right?
So if we were a town that said for single family homes, we want four off street parking spaces per each single family home or per each duplex, we would not be able to mandate that if the developer of that particular location said we're perfectly satisfied with providing one or two spaces.
Or zero.
Or zero.
And when does that?
But again, I think as we, it's a hundred page bill, so I haven't gotten through all of it.
Hundred and seven page.
But, you know, just in scanning the sections, it seemed like a lot of it went into effect for January one. I don't know if all of the zoning sections are at that date or a different date, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
That's good, good to know, yeah.
Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on to a public hearings. The first item, two six four Third Pile Avenue, Special Exception Application of some holding LLC for in addition to an existing auto repair facility in Design Commercial District, the applicant requested that we postpone the hearing on that item to January twenty seventh, correct?
That's correct.
Right, can I have a motion to postpone, Commissioner Bron?
I move to postpone January twenty seventh.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Commissioner Caposey? Thank you. But that's about all those in favor of the motion to postpone to January twenty sixth, please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our next item, sixteen forty-three Post Road, a special permit application of Sikorsky Financial Credit Unit. Union.
Union, sorry.
That's okay, for exterior renovation and associated site reconfiguration of an existing building in bank use in a center design business district, so Attorney Fallon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here this evening representing Sikorsky Financial Credit Union. This is a very simple application. We're replacing a bank with a bank. So you're saying, well, why weren't you on the compliance document? And that's the doc, and and that's maybe the, from our standpoint, one of the more exciting things about the application, and that is we are really enhancing a building that with all due respect to its current aesthetics does not, in our mind, add a lot to this sort of gateway location in the downtown, and you'll hear a little about that tonight. So the property is located at sixteen forty-three Post Road. It's in the Center Design Business District. It's been the location for a number of years of the now closed T D Bank branch. And banks and financial institutions like T D and like Sikorsky Financial Credit Union are permitted under section six point three C of your regulations as they've now been recodified. So permitted use, obviously, in a long time, same use in this property. We're going to make a presentation tonight while I introduce our presenters in a minute, but one of the things that we're going to stress, I think, is that we've undertaken a very significant aesthetic upgrade to the exterior of the building. And the interior renovation will also be quite nice, but we're not in any way expanding the size of the of the facility. It will remain twenty-seven hundred and nine square feet. A few words about Sikorsky Credit Union, as I put in my statement of use. The credit union is a full service banking and financial services institution for its members. They currently have over sixty-six thousand members and one thousand, two hundred and thirteen of those members live right here in the town of Fairfield. So we're excited that the central location in the Center Design Business District is going to provide a very convenient opportunity for the credit union to expand its services and offerings to Fairfield residents as well as those in surrounding communities. The nuts and bolts are, we're going to have six full time employees at this post road location. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight thirty A M to five P M, and Saturdays, nine to twelve P M. There are and will remain fourteen parking spaces on site, as was the case for the prior bank use and this bank use too. So what we want to do tonight is briefly, being consider of your time, give you a brief overview of our presentation and our proposal. And that will involve three individuals. One, Mr. Brian Baker, who is the Director of Engineering for Civil One, will review with you the site plan and the layout. Where one of the other things we're excited about doing here, and I won't steal Brian's thunder, is it's peculiar now because the way T D had it set up, the driveway off of Ruane Street was entrance only. And the only exit was off of the post road, out onto the post road. Well, that's not always desirable in the sense that no alternative access out to Ruane meant all the traffic has to go out to the post road where it could take a left or a right. The other thing that was a real glitch was the drive through window, and if somebody was involved in a substantial transaction, like closing a house or something, it's sometimes when I get behind somebody like, what are you doing? At that look, at that drive through window, it could back up. So we are making subject to your approval, the Ruane Street driveway two way, which we think will enhance convenience and safety. And we have Ron, I was, where's Ron? Right here, Ron, give me your last name. I wrote it down, and I didn't bring it over. Ron is our architect from Q Architects, and he'll give you a brief overview of our exterior design as we propose it. And lastly, bringing a little local flavor to the table, we'll have Bill Kenny, who you know, our landscape architect, give you a little overview of the landscaping we propose. Again, all part of the idea that Sikorsky Credit Union was committed to really enhancing the visibility of the property. So I will start with Brian, and you can come right up here, Brian, and we can display on the screen the site plan or anything else you would like.
Thank you. Will we pull up the civil site plan set?
Give your name and I'm sorry, yeah.
Brian Baker with Civil One, Licensed Engineer in the state of Connecticut, also Certified Professional in Stormwater Quality and Certified Professional in Sediment Control. So we were brought on to do both the survey and the site plan for the post and existing bank. So what you see here is our zoning location survey. We went in and surveyed the existing building, parking spaces, sidewalks, utilities, lights. And when Sikorsky got involved, we were asked to like analyze if there were any improvements or changes that we could make to the site. It was still going to remain a bank. You can see on the left side of the building there, that's the E west side. There's the two lanes coming in to the property. You know, one is dedicated theoretically to the teller window as you wrap around the building. And then the lane further to the west would be the one way into the fourteen parking spaces behind the building, and and the fourteen spaces is what's required by zoning. So basically, the parking area and that entrance off of Post Road and the teller window are all going to remain. As Attorney Fallon mentioned, you see the little stub going out to Ruane. That is the only reason we know it was theoretically used as a one way, which I think people used it two way historically. Anyway, there's an arrow painted. Pointing one way into the site, there's no other site signage saying do not enter or no exit. And the fact of the matter is that, you know, that that access out to Ruane, having that proposed as two way, it's going to be a lot better for site circulation. Right now, if you if we were to operate the way that's painted, everyone coming into the site, into the teller lane, into the parking lot, all has to exit through the one lane at where the teller lane is out to Post Road. If you want to make a left, now you're crossing two lanes of traffic to try to make a left. It's not great. It's not not all that safe. Whereas if you were allowed, which we want and proposing, is to have it two way out to Ruane. Now you can go out to Ruane, go to the light, make your left or right on the post road. So we could go to the site plan sheet. It's just a demo plan, simply showing that we're repaving, yeah. So there's the, as far as the exterior improvements go, from the civil site plan perspective, couple things, you can see on the left side, we have the new painted stop stop line and stop sign and the two way arrows in and out, you know, to have two way traffic out to Ruane. We're also going to propose a chain link fence, a black vinyl coated chain link fence along the southern side of that exit out to sort of delineate, because right now it's it's kind of a sea of pavement between the different parking areas and that roadway, so that'll sort of demarcate where that lane, the the two way lane out to Ruane starts. And then within the site itself, it's all paved currently. What we've done is actually expanded. So the green area on the left, about in the middle of the property, there's a big concrete sidewalk across there. We're going to remove that and make that a larger landscaped island. And Bill Kenny will talk about the the landscaping, but so we're we're getting rid of some impervious surface there. Also, in that bottom right corner, where we're proposing a dumpster pad, that's all currently entirely paved. That's going to be another landscape island that we're going to add in that area, so we're you know, we've got about two hundred and eighty square feet less impervious surface proposed after the modifications. Currently, the drainage, there's a catch basin in the middle of the property with two perforated PVC pipes that go out to each side. Seems to function perfectly fine, so basically we're infiltrating all the all the stormwater, and we're going to have, as I mentioned, slightly less impervious surface, so that system will continue to function. And then along the front edge of the site, Bill Kenny will get in a little more detail, make some modifications to the sidewalk and the landscaping, how the front of the building itself, you know, presents itself. So from the civil engineering side, it was a pretty easy project. It's a bank, going to be a bank. We wanted to improve the circulation, which we're doing, and decrease the impervious surface. You know, we need all that parking. Fourteen is the appropriate number, so we're not, we can't get rid of any additional parking. So making some minor modifications, we were able to reduce the impervious surface.
Thank you, Brian. Ron Cracaro.
I'm sorry. Yes.
The decrease in impervious surface, that's that's fabulous. Is that based on an island you're putting in? I thought you.
So there, that little triangular island on the left side of the property, about halfway up. Right now, that's got a concrete pad on it.
I see that, yeah.
And they have the dumpster just sitting on that pad with no enclosure, so we're removing that. And then the bottom right corner of the parking area, that's entirely paved now. So that's going to be pavement's going to be removed and replaced with the landscaping island and a small con. and a small concrete pad for a dumpster enclosure that actually should be enclosed and screened.
And does your parking extend beyond, below that as well? Or that's, your parking goes below those two little islands of grass, right, that you're putting in there?
Yeah, those are, those are our parking spaces. Basically, like seven on each side of the drive aisle.
And we don't have a tree requirement for, do we have a?
No, but I think when Bill presents, you'll be pleased with the landscaping enhancements. Yeah, parking lots existing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, I'm sorry.
One question. Where's the chain link fence? On which side of the driveway?
South side of the driveway.
Which way's south?
Yeah, south is down.
School, a dance school on the other side where.
The north side?
The north side, yeah.
Yeah, the north side, it's, it's basically entirely paved on the north side. But they're, actually, their building is sort of, is close to the property line there. And then you can kind of see just north of our arrow where we're leaving, there's a white line. That's the first parking space for that next business up above. And they all park, they all pull in perpendicular to Rowan and park. So there's, there's plenty of room. I did go out to the site and check that we've got good sight lines. Sight lines are fine. You know, there's plenty of room for two-way traffic in, in this particular area.
Commissioner Capozzi. So I think it's really smart to make the Rowan entrance a two-way traffic situation to avoid the Post Road. Is, I wasn't, forgive me if you mentioned it, is the Post Road, it's currently an exit only? Is that correct? Is it going to be an entrance as well, or is it going to remain an exit?
There are entrances off of Post Road, which is that the driveway on the left. So that's basically where you, if you're coming east on Post Road, you can make the right into the two entry lanes. And then you can, if you could stay to the right to our parking area or stay to the left if you're going towards the teller.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Ron Coro. Our architect is going to give you a brief overview of the exterior enhancements.
Thanks, Sean, and thanks, folks, for having us. If we can go to those elevations, that would probably be helpful. She did four oh one. Perfect, thank you. So two points of context I just want to sort of point out before we kind of get into the changes. And unfortunately, I'm actually referring to that existing image in the upper left-hand corner. Hopefully, you got, you folks know the building in general. Point one is, in Boston, excuse me, the Post Road generally is a mix, generally, a mix of one and two-story structures that are kind of stacked side by side. They form a street wall and form the scale of Post Road. And the important point is they're essentially vertically proportioned, whether they're one or two stories. Again, that's a generalization. And I think the more successful parts of Boston, excuse me, Post Road are arranged this way. So our building, it's massing, although the footprint is about the same as some of the others. It's very different. It's very horizontal, very low slung. That, that sort of cap, that lid really emphasizes that sort of funk-eresque proportion. The other point of context I want to put out there for, I'll kind of come back to, has to do with aesthetics. So aesthetics is a very subjective thing. My interpretation of modern and someone else's may be different. My interpretation of traditional and someone else's may be different. So for the sake of discussion, we kind of put, we put them in three, in three different buckets. We have, we call it traditional architecture, traditional. We call modern architecture, modern, that's the two ends of the spectrum. And then in the middle, sometimes there's a blend and that's transitional. So we kind of use those three categories to at least be able to communicate more effectively with something that's really subjective. So bear in mind that, well, why don't we go to the next slide? Though that portion I mentioned, massing, we immediately worked to change that by eliminating the overhangs in the left and right side of the building. So that one, that one move, really just the demolition of it, totally changes proportion of the building, takes a single-story low-slung building and now makes it a single-story vertically proportioned building, much like the other buildings on that street that are successful. The other thing we did in terms of that overall massing proportion is the building to the right is two stories. And then the one just further across Rowan is, I think, three stories. So our single-story building is transitioning up to the building next to it and the one after that. So we organized this vertical tower element to kind of help with that transition. It works for the credit union because it really showcases their front door. And otherwise, we have, for the most part, renovated the entire exterior. There will be, will be new glazing, new, a new skin of wireboard siding, almost like a metal panel-like look to it with accents. Now, we can get into the actual materials and finishes for your questions. The last point I want to make is the credit union's brand is modern. It's, it's a, it's a modern brand. It's ruled out in other locations. And it is, it is important that their brand is projected to them. Everybody wants to, it's, it is a retail establishment and today they're projecting your brand. What we did here is we modified their brand and we sort of turned the dial more toward the transitional, toward the transitional, which is closer to traditional, by adding these wood material elements. It's a little hard to see, this is a little bit light here, but in your packet, hopefully you've noticed there's these wood components that we've added, both on the front, on the east side and on the rear. So those are my only comments. We can get into the details per your questions, but I wanted to give you the baseline for the reason the building looks like.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions for Ron?
So I'm looking, so basically, the tall part of the building, that's not an elevator, is it? Just a tall part of the building?
Just, just a, just a tall entranceway. It's just taller than the rest.
It's, you're not explaining the footprint, so that takes the place of like the right side of the building when you're looking from the road.
That's right. And that's right.
So one of the neighbor, one, we got one letter. They don't like the, is there neon here? I didn't, I couldn't tell. Oh, there's no neon signs?
The gentleman's letter, I forget his name, he may have mistaken in the renderings the green accents for neon, but there's no neon.
And the wood you're talking about, is that in sort of like the front facade? It looks like that could be the wood.
The wood is on the left, that brown, that brown.
That was brick, okay.
It's, today it's brick, we're, we're.
Oh, that looks nice, yeah.
We're wrapping that with wood-like product.
Thank you. It's definitely improved.
Yeah. Free that all the public neighbors in the area might know about the latest about this. But I guess my question is, has there been any outspoken objection from neighbors?
No, no, we, we actually, we did the mailing, which that's, can be part of your record, but everybody within two hundred and fifty feet, I have a copy of it. We've received no negative reaction. And in fact, my office is right around the block. And I, I frequent a lot of merchants there. And they were like, hey, wow, something's finally going to happen with that bank branch. Oh, that's wonderful. I mean, nobody's really, you know, I'm not going to say anything bad about it. But the, the one thing I would say too is, in terms of the gentleman's letter, whatever he may have interpreted or not, and it was, his letter was basically supportive and very respectful. We appreciate it. But we did, as Ron said, endeavor to, as, to use this term, dial back a little bit, this, their normal thing by adding the wood elements. And I think it's, you know, I'm prejudiced, but I think it's beautiful, so.
Thank you.
And again, I'm new to the commission. What is our requirement in terms of signage? The signage looks very large to me at the top of the building in relation to a lot of the other signage on the Post Road.
Do you want to answer that? Do you want me to answer that?
Well, we can both answer. But we, the signage will have to comply with the provisions of your zoning regulations, which the director can enumerate on. But we are not seeking, nor will we seek, any variances for signage.
And signage is, in this commercial district, signage is limited to one sign per elevation. So they can have a sign on the parking lot side, a sign on the building frontage side. And for a single tenant, Matt, seventy-two square feet?
Seventy-two per sign.
Yep.
Two sign maximum.
And we will comply with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. And I put him right on the spot there.
His ears perked up.
Mr. Kenny. So again, in, in an effort to ensure that we're really doing something attractive here in addition to bringing a good service to this property, we engaged Bill Kenny to make sure we had an enhanced landscaping plan. And he'll give you a brief overview of that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Bill Kenny, Principal William Kenny Associates here in Fairfield. I'm a professional landscape architect. Possible, may I share my screen?
Can you make Bill Kenny a host?
Yes, he's your co-host already. I promoted him.
Okay. So he's going to share.
He's going to share.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll share.
I'm sick. All right. So I would like to just briefly discuss some of the existing conditions and then go into the proposed conditions. In this image, we have the bank building with the red dot and the existing bank building. And you can see where there's some street trees out front. These are mature honey locust trees that are there for quite a while. And they extend across in front of the former drugstore. Then there are some other parking lot trees on adjacent properties to the, right to the east and to the right and immediately to the south. And so otherwise, with the access drives and the parking, there's not many, much opportunity for planting. But as Brian has discussed, you can see there's this concrete pad here that was eliminated to increase some of the planting. And then the bottom right-hand corner, where that asphalt will be removed to provide planting and a new place for the trash enclosure and to be able to screen it better and hide it. So. Go now. So another thing under existing conditions is that the landscape is quite old and it's primarily junipers, low-growing junipers. It was maybe two or three species. It's maybe one arborvitae and a bunch of junipers. And so not very diverse. So we're going to expand it a little bit and we're going to diversify it quite a bit. And we're proposing to use all native plants. So we have one tree and that is. We have a tree right there. And then we have, if we start in the front, we have double layers of shrubs with flowering ground cover in front of that. And in the, in the back, we are having, again, a variety of shrubs. They're evergreen and deciduous, or the evergreen are inkberries. So they'll provide foliage throughout the year. And then the shrubs are flowering shrubs and they'll be flowering primarily in the spring. But the perennials that we have will flower the rest of the growing season through the summer and, and fall. So we expanded, this is the area where there was a concrete pad and that is now going to be planted. And then at the bottom right-hand corner, you have the dumpster with a fence enclosure around it. And then all of this planting goes around that. The fence, that was the question about the fence. The fence is proposed here to here. And there's an existing building here now that's pretty close right up to the property line. And then, and yeah, we have a plant list, we have planting notes. The plant list provides quantity sizes for the proposed plants. And you can see there's over seventy shrubs, one tree, and close to fifty different ground covers that are flowering perennials and some native grasses. We have included a second sheet that has photos for some of the plants that are proposed. And also, we're, we included some information on some brick that is proposed for the pavement. And we're just doing a slight modification out front. Well, one I want to point out as well, that these honey locusts are, are going to remain. But we are providing a little bit of detail with some brick banding here. You, in some ways, reach out and extend like a breeding, a doormat. As you were walking down the sidewalk, you would cross that and it sort of draws you into the building, picks up on some lines that are in the building, the architecture in the building. So it works off of that. And, and while still maintaining the brick band along the road. So we just had a little bit of detail to get someone to turn and look as they're walking, as they see something different along the street scape. That's pretty much it.
Commissioner, no questions for Bill?
The, the pretty brick design of the multicolored brick, is that the brick band you're talking about? That's closest to the building? Is that also extended to some of those green areas that you're, you're expanding on or developing?
Brian, was it, were there others?
No other brick. Within the interior of the site, the curbing that makes up those islands, the concrete curbing is in good shape and it's going to remain. So we'll keep the existing curbing, but it will, the entire site will be milled and repaved.
And as, as far as trees, I see trees are scattered randomly. Did you, you might have already said this, I might not have heard you. But is there a net gain or loss of trees in general?
Net gain, one. There's not many opportunities, though. But it's, there are some immediately adjacent.
So you're taking the three sort of little, the little green areas and improving on each of them?
Yes, with significant, fairly, fairly robust planting plan too, if you look at the species qualification.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Kenny?
Doesn't look so.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your attention. I want to compliment the team because I think this has really been a very thoughtful working with these guys. Has been a very great experience. Each has brought some real creativity and commitment to this project. And we hope you agree it, it comes out showing that. I mean, in the end of the day, we're getting a prestigious financial institution in our downtown center, which will obviously enhance our economic diversity and vitality. We're enhancing convenience and safety with regard to ingress and egress and onsite circulation. And lastly, dead horse, once again, I think we're making a very significant enhancement to the property based upon the beautiful architecture that Ron has been able to bring forth and Bill's excellent work on the landscaping. So we hope you will favorably consider this application. Leaving for a long time, a well-deserved Christmas holiday. So I don't know when you will get to it, but any consideration you could give us on it. Because Sikorsky would love to start going so that we can bring this thing to fruition sooner than later. And without being presumptuous about it, you know, the five or six weeks that we're talking about here could be helpful. But we also appreciate you have other responsibilities and we appreciate your attention this evening.
Hey, Attorney Fallon, that will conclude the initial applicant presentation. In terms of public comment, is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard on this item? Anyone's joining remotely who wishes to be heard on this item, please sign in and chat or click the raise hand button, Mr. Mullin, anyone?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, last call. If anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please indicate so in chat. Okay, seeing no, no one, I will close the public comment portion, assuming.
No, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And we'll close public here on this item, thank you. And that will bring us to our final two items. Zoning Regulation Amendment subsection eight H modification, application of Primrose Development LLC, contract purchaser for revisions to zoning regulations to add section forty-two Black Rock Affordable District to allow construction of an affordable one hundred eighty-four unit multifamily housing development pursuant to section eight thirty G, the Connecticut General Statutes and a Resident, all triple A's. the Connecticut General statutes and a residential triple A zone and forty-two twenty-one and forty-two sixty-seven Black Rock Turnpike subsection eight H modification, application of Primrose Development LLC contract purchaser to rezone the parcels located at forty-two twenty-one and forty-two sixty-seven Black Rock Turnpike to the Black Rock Affordable Housing Zone on land presently zoned as residential triple A pursuant to section eight thirty G, Connecticut General statutes. Uh, we know if Attorney Bellis is.
There he is. We're waiting on you, sir.
Are ya?
Yes.
Waiting on our, our last eight thirty G application to get through.
Save the best for last. Good evening. I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis. Uh, I represent four-two-two-one. Black Rock. LLC. You might remember, um, I did an eight thirty G application uh, for an apartment, for apartment buildings on this site. Uh, we had hearings and it was denied without prejudice. Uh, when I did the project, uh, a month or two ago, I remember it was conceptual site plans, text amendment, zone change under eight thirty G. So, uh, I'm allowed to, um, bring a modification to those plans under eight thirty GH. And that's what we're doing here tonight, so I'll be brief. But the, um, idea was that I listened to your concerns. And, uh, not so much from you, Joel, but a little bit. Uh, and I decided that we would do a modification, um, that would reduce the number of buildings from three to two. We eliminated one whole apartment building. Um, we reduced the number of apartments to one hundred and eighty-four. There now will be twelve studios, ninety-two one bedrooms and eighty-two bedrooms, uh, which is a total of two hundred and thirty-four bedroom. There'll be approximately four hundred parking spaces. And that comes out to about one point eight parking space per, approximately. So, um, what I did was I submitted a new, uh, what we call modified statement of zone change. Uh, as I've outlined before, so that was the modification. We, um, I did a new, uh, text amendment. And I did a new affordability plan. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but, uh, I do have some exhibits. On the affordability plan, uh, that will render fifty-six affordable units uh, under the new proposal, twenty-eight of which will be at sixty percent, uh, AMI and twenty-eight at eighty percent AMI. They're all forty-year deed restricted. So what were the concerns that this commission had when I did my original application? So that's what I would like to address if you, you'll let me for a few minutes. Uh, the first was, um, you wanted a copy, I think, of the conservation easement. So I've provided a copy of the conference, conservation easement that was recorded on the land records. And what it basically says, um, is that, uh, there's no construction in the conservation easement, but there's no setback. So you can build right up to it. I know that was one of the concerns. The second document that I provided is exhibit two. Um, that was an issue that had to deal with, um, uh, the turning radius coming in from Black Rock Turnpike. Um, it was felt that, uh, we needed to, um, get permission from the adjacent property owner uh, to be able to go a little bit over his land if you had a big truck and then up the driveway. So I contacted, um, Fairfield Medical, I think it's called, the Hartford Health Facility. You might be familiar with, with that name. Um, and, uh, they were represented by Chris Smith. And I said, you know, I need an easement over that land, uh, so we could bring a, a, an emergency vehicle in and have a little ability to do that. So Chris, um, spoke to his client and they agreed to give us an easement. Uh, he's written a letter as exhibit two. Um, as part of that, um, we've given a, a little drawing. Uh, that shows the vehicle being, the, the larger vehicle, wire truck being able to get in. Um, so, uh, on the Fairfield Medical site, um, they, they are going to be relocating eight parking spaces, but they will have no loss of parking spaces. They're just gonna relocate them. Um, there will be no, we're not taking away it. Uh, on exhibit three, I provided the commission with, um, there was some concerns since we hadn't gone to the wetlands commission yet. Um, you know, how would this impact the wetlands that are on the property? So Steve Danzer, um, who is a professional wetland scientist and soil scientist and arborist, uh, provided me with a report. And, uh, what he, uh, and, and that's exhibit three. But basically he said, based on these revised plans, uh, he said that, uh, the proposal avoids or minimizes the activity near the wetlands to the greatest extent practical and is therefore considerably better proposal, in my opinion, than the first one I've had. So, um, having said that, uh, if this, uh, commission were to approve just the zone change text amendment, my next step would be to go to wetlands and actually get an approval from them. But, um, we've removed one of the buildings. We have no clubhouse there, so there shouldn't really be a problem with wetland. And, um, I say this after going till ten o'clock last night in a wetlands hearing. But the reason I know that it shouldn't be a problem is that, um, we've already gotten wetlands approval when this was, uh, the Fairfield Medical, um, building. Um, they were at that time proposing an eight thirty G. So I don't think it'll be a problem, but the plan is to go to wetlands, uh, get their blessing. If there's any conditions of approval, obviously abide by it, uh, and then come back with a full site plan to this commission. Uh, exhibit four is, um, a letter from Dave Sullivan, who still, who I have available on, um, remotely. And, uh, Dave took a look at the, uh, new entrance and the geometry of the driveway. And he finds, and I'm just gonna read his conclusion. We find that operationally and geometrically, the revised submission presents no traffic concerns. Uh, exhibit five is a letter, uh, from, uh, Jason Edwards, who's our engineer. And, uh, if you may recall, Jason's also on remotely and I'll have him speak briefly in a minute. Um, these are conceptual site plans that he prepared and he also prepared some conceptual, um, uh, storm drainage calculations, uh, to make sure that the property would, would work and that there wouldn't be any kind of, um, we can, we have to comply with, um, MS four, right, of your storm drainage. So that's, he had to take some, uh, some calculations to make sure that happened. Again, I just wanna emphasize that, um, these are not final site plans. I'm not here to present the final site plans. We're not ready for that yet. Um, I'm not here to present the final storm drainage. I do not have wetlands approval. That's not why I'm here. I am still here because we are asking the commission to approve the modification to my text amendment to allow the zone change so that I can go get the site plans, um, and come back and see you all. So what we normally, um, yeah, so that is the procedure that we're trying to follow. Uh, the modification is still, um, under eight dash thirty G. The, uh, criteria is the exact same as you always have used, um, in all your decisions. And I don't have to bore you with all those cuz you, you, you know them as well as I. Um, but basically, uh, the standard's still the same. Um, that it can be denied only for substantial health and safety reasons that outweigh the need for affordable housing. So those are the still same standards as always. Um, and with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, Jason, just to go over a little bit of the conceptual site plan. If you're able to get him on the line.
Jason's been, um.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, Jason.
Hi. Uh, good evening. Uh, for the record, Jason Edwards, uh, Principal of J Edwards and Associates. Uh, we're engineers and surveyors located at two twenty-seven Stephanie Road in Easton. My office has been involved. Um, uh, we, we did not prepare the original submission. Uh, can I share my screen on here? I think I can. Sorry. One second.
Let us know if you need us to share.
Yeah, I'm just having a moment of clarity here. Make sure I share the right plan. Can everybody see the plan of, uh, screen that has the site plan out here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is the, the same plan that was, uh, submitted, um, that Mr. Bellis was referring to. Um, so as I was saying, uh, we did not prepare the initial concept plan, uh, that was submitted with the original application that was done by another firm. We got involved, um, you know, about a, uh, year or so ago and, and began doing some, uh, some preliminary work. And then, um, initially, you know, we've, uh, we do that site plan and, and began working on some changes. Uh, we've made some considerable changes since then, uh, to what you saw originally. Obviously, there's one less building. Um, that, the third building used to sit up in the back, if you can see my mouse pointer. It's out on the far side of the wetlands and we had a loop of road that came around the backside. Um, so this current proposal eliminates all, all that activity in the rear, uh, reduces the pavement significantly. Um, and, uh, to do that, we, we created our loop to come around in front of the lower building um, and use the, the design of the building, which drops down in grade and kind of followed that around. Um, and came back out again. So we still have circulation, um, all the way throughout. Uh, there is a plan, uh, also in here that, that provides some circulation of a SU thirty truck and a, um, fire engine. Uh, I'll show you that in a moment. Um, then we also, this is sheet two point one. Um, we, um, did soils testing to just to determine suitability of soils for our drainage design. And, uh, we went quite, quite a ways with the design. Uh, we have a series of stormwater galleries, uh, in different areas here to pick up water as needed. Um, distribute it, some via level spreader to this wetland, um, and some of it to discharge back out into the state drainage, uh, which there's a, an existing pipe that goes down and across the front here and ties back out. Um, so this would all, really what we did here is we took the, the previous coverage and, and, and plugged it in to, to make sure that we have enough area of our storage capacity to, um, to comply with the current, uh, water quality standard, stormwater manual, all that. Uh, so, you know, we're comfortable that we can make that work. Um, we also have sanitary sewers. We just ran through and made sure we can get, um, our sanitary sewers tied in out here. Uh, and, uh, appears to be capacity. So, so it would be water in sewer both servicing this. Uh, we also just, the wetlands, um, we, we moved everything that we could, uh, basically all but this one area of driveway that comes in that there's no other place to come in. Um, we come by, close to this small wetland pocket by the street, which is really, in speaking with, uh, Mr. Danzer, is really a drainage ditch is what it is for the highway runoff. Uh, it's not a high-quality wetland. Um, so we did pull everything back at least a hundred feet from all the other wetlands on the site. That's the, the circle that you're seeing around the wetlands is, is a hundred-foot setback. So we made an effort to do that. Um, in the front, there's existing conservation easements over all those wetlands. So we're more than a hundred feet from, from all of them. And then this is just the, uh, the vehicle movements of, um, on the right side here. This is a SU thirty truck that would be able to come in, come around and then travel all the way, you know, through and around the site. Um, that's, you know, not really a problem. Uh, and then same here, we did a hundred-foot, uh, aerial ladder truck. That can also come through and, and make it through all the turns. Um, can, you know, go through individually, but, but the change here is that we, we made the, this entrance alignment. It's really the same as what I think was shown towards the end of the last hearing, but, um, we, you know, just add a little more detail to what could travel through there. So we relocated some of the parking spaces and three of them are across the opposite side of the drive here, which isn't ideal. Um, we may be able to look at that closer in a, in a full, um, site plan application, but this is what we came up with for now. And just, it, it isn't, doesn't look ideal, but if you look at the other side of what was approved, if someone comes in and takes a left here, they still have that same condition. Uh, we probably had a crosswalk here someplace and a stop sign. Um, so there would be a path for somebody to cross this. Uh, it wouldn't be a high-speed access here, so, uh, we feel it's a good solution. And, uh, this was just, uh, this is just the wetland delineation map. This is what Steve Danzer has verified that these wetland locations are correct. Um, they originally reflect quite a long time ago, so he went out and, uh, we, uh, we, we surveyed it and he, he verified everything, so. I think that's it, Steve, unless you want me to touch on anything else.
Uh, the commission may have questions.
Mr. Our Lady. Yeah. Is there a wetland on the northwest corner of the property? I think you referred to it as like a drainage ditch.
There is a wetland at the, would be along the street there along Black Rock Turnpike. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, it, it seems like Black Rock Turnpike is north-south, but it's actually west to east there, so the northwest corner. Um, is there any reason you couldn't put the main access in that northwest corner as opposed to the hundred and eighty-degree loop-de-loop you've got, uh, on the eastern side of the property?
To come in, kind of straight in, past that wetland?
Come straight in.
I think there's, uh, the sightlines are challenging there. I don't think we can make the sightlines work to DFT standards. Down where that existing entrance is, is one of the only spots that you can make it with the, the crest of the hill there. Um, so we're trying to not add another curb cut and keep that sightline, uh, you know, per what's already there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bronn.
Uh, could you, I couldn't really hear clearly what you were saying. Could you explain again what testing you did and where is, it was done in relation to where the drainage, uh, infiltration systems will go?
We did testing all over the site. We spent, I think, two days out there with the backhoe. I don't have all those whole locations on here. Um, you know, we would provide those as part of our, our, uh, final, you know, if we, if we move forward, we would certainly provide those. But we did testing through the areas. So this, this actually in the front here is, uh, is all gonna be a fill condition, so that's why a lot of the drainage.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Could you just talk a little?
I'm, I'm gonna try to get closer here. Uh, the, the area in front here is a fill condition, so we did do testing through there, but this is all gonna be in fill material anyway, so it's, it's up above existing grade. Um, we, then we tested.
What type of testing did you do?
We, we took a, um, excavator out and dug test holes, um, like you would for a septic system. Uh, we did. I don't know exactly how many, but we spent about two days out there doing test holes.
Was it an infiltrator test?
Uh, we did do some infiltr, uh, yes, the infiltr, infiltration tests, yes. Uh, yeah, we have a few of those as well and we'd have to do more, uh, before we can, uh.
Do you have the data for that? Do you have a drainage report?
Uh, we, I don't know if we, that, we prepared a formal drainage report at this point. Uh, that would be something we would do with a wetlands application, but, um, you know, we, we did enough work with it to feel comfortable that this design would work.
Do you have a, a drainage system designed yet or no? I see something that looks like a drainage system.
Yeah, we, we did the, the basics of the drainage design to make sure that we have, that, that we're comfortable that there's capacity here and then that the, the system could be built, um, with the conditions that we're proposing.
So, um, in October, and I know you've modified it since October, um, we got a letter from the, um, from the conservation director. And he, he just mentioned a, a, a lack of, of information. And could I just go through the list? You could tell me what you've done since then and now? Because he pointed out a lot of deficiencies in the data. And my concern is if we're being asked to approve a zone change and a text amendment to allow this scale of development, um, we should have some data so we can determine if we think that would cause harm to the environment. So he said there's no soil data. Now you've mentioned you have done some testing. Test pit, perk hole was provided. You have done some testing?
Yeah, we've done a considerable amount of testing now, yes.
But you have not provided us the data results of that or the locations?
I, I'd have to ask Attorney Bellis if we submitted any of that. I don't recall specifically, but I don't think we did.
No, we did not.
Okay. And no wetlands delineation report completed within the five years was provided. Has that been done since then?
Yes, that's been done.
And do we have those results? Or do you have that map showing the wetlands' flags?
That's, I just, yep, that was just.
That's been submitted with this package?
Yes.
Is that going to conservation yet or that?
No, I told you we're gonna go to, we go to the wetland after the text amendment and zone change, but that map has been created.
He said no ecological evaluation report was provided?
It is now.
Do we have it?
Yes.
Okay. And that's one by Dr. Danzer?
Yes, it is.
Because that didn't really say, it was pretty brief report. It was not a full evaluation, it didn't look like to me. Well, he didn't have.
It's not a wetlands commission. This is a zoning commission. So I, that, we would agree with you. We'd have a lot more detail at the.
We need detail too, but yeah.
I know, but you need zoning detail.
Well, we need, but environmental can have overlap. No stormwater management plan was provided. That still hasn't been done, right? We do not have a stormwater management.
Not the final one, no.
Okay. No sedimentation and erosion control plan for steep slopes was provided. That has not been done yet, right?
We do show, you know, silk fences on here, but we don't have a full, no, full design and plan has not been done.
A limit of disturbance lines was provided?
That's on here. It's hard to see, but it's on the plan.
Can you show, could you, where is it?
It's basically the.
What plan is that? What's the title of that?
Two point one. The ground utility plan.
No tree.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, say that again, sorry.
I'm not, I cut you off, I apologize, go ahead.
No tree inventory and removal plans was provided as tree canopy interception plays a significant role in stormwater management and water quality. That has not been provided, I don't think.
No, I don't know if that's even a requirement of a wetlands application, but no, we have not provided.
We always like to talk about trees. No planting plan for mitigation due to permanent loss of upland review area was provided. Now, you're not going into the upland review area at all anymore, is that it?
The only area is the access driveway right along Black Rock Turnpike, which is not.
How close are you to that wetland?
Probably about thirty feet.
Now, there was a small wetland which Mr. Bishop, the conservation director thought could have been a vernal pool. Has that been evaluated? I didn't see that Mr. Danz, Dr. Danzer.
That's where we removed the building.
I'm sorry.
That's where we removed the building.
Okay, but if it's a vernal pool, could very well require more distance. Vernal pools I've read could require six hundred feet to protect them, but.
Well, there's, I don't want to get into a big wetlands discussion, but upland review areas are not setbacks. Setbacks are what we use for construction. You can't put a foundation within a setback. Upland review just means that the wetlands commission has the ability to review it and to determine whether there's any adverse significant activity that would hurt the wetlands. So if someone is, you can get a permit from them if you do activity actually in their wetlands, but you need a permit. And you can get their approval for doing things in the upland review area without a permit if there's no adverse impact on the wetlands.
And they could actually require a greater area of non disturbance if necessary to protect the resource.
They can do what they did already, which is, I think, impose a conservation easement.
Well, he, that was already in effect when he wrote this letter, so. And then he also wanted a bedrock removal blasting plan. I know that whole area has been blasted. Will there be blasting required for this project?
Couldn't say for sure, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule it out.
Usually the blasting plans are given to the fire marshal by state code. By state statute, the fire marshal has the jurisdiction over blasting. So there couldn't be any blasting done by this client unless he got the fire marshal's approval.
Right, but it's still good to know if there's blasting because that could affect hydrology of the whole area.
Yeah, I, I, I think when we come back with the site plan, those kinds of questions would be.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you, Attorney Bellis, because we got an opinion from our town attorney a few months ago on another project that you might have been involved with, I'm not sure. Where they basically said a commission has to have something concrete before it. This, our town attorney. I'm asking him. This has to do with, I don't even know which one, but they're, it comes up a lot when we have these concept things, so. So, so just so I can clarify maybe for some of the new commissioners that you had an application, not, not for a project, just for a text amendment to our regulations and to change the zone to allow this scale and this type of project in, on this parcel, right?
Under eight thirty G.
Under eight thirty G, and you're allowed to do that.
There's a state statute, there's a state regulation, and there's case law.
So the only, so there was no site plan with all the detail we normally have?
No, you wouldn't get that.
Right, well, we normally would with an eight thirty G application, but this was not an eight thirty G application for the project just to set up that site to allow this scale of development.
Correct.
Okay, so we denied it. And now it's coming back for a modification, which is also allowed under eight thirty G, right? So now we're still, in my opinion, sort of in the same place we were because even though you've modified what the concept is, we still don't have a detailed site plan or detailed information that might be needed for us to determine if changing our regulations and changing the zone to allow this scale would cause harm to the environment or public health and safety. So that's really where I am right now, right in that intersection of can we, do we have enough data or information? And our town attorney has said that she believes the Supreme Court understands the difference between having a finite application where you can measure consequences and impact and decide whether there's a public health or safety issue and a conceptual site plan, which is just a pretty picture, not necessarily drawn to scale. She believes you really need an actual site plan to have a development application. And that she differentiates, she distinguishes, and I'm asking what you.
If that's Attorney Pat Sullivan, I've dealt with this issue with her in other towns. I don't know if she wrote that or not.
She wrote this, but.
It sounds like it.
But she's distinguishing.
I don't agree with her on that.
Okay, well, but she's distinguishing because frequently our one thirty one beach road application is, is used to support only having a site plan. But in that one, I mean, only having a, I'm sorry, support having the text amendment. But in that one, they actually had a site plan. They had a full application. So.
I don't believe they.
Yeah. The one thirty one beach case was part of an affordable housing application. There was an actual site plan filed, so I guess.
The conceptual site plan.
Yeah. So you, so you're saying that this modification of our text amendment and our zone for that area to allow this scale of development is adequate based on the information you've provided?
Yes, I do. But I know I'm also making it a hundred percent crystal clear that I have to come back with a final site plan that you can evaluate and all the things you raised, I would have to have better answers for you with the final site plan.
But yet we have to determine if it's just a very strange.
No, it's all.
It's just.
Commissioner Lady. Attorney Bellis, looking at the text amendment particularly.
Go ahead.
Sections forty two point four, B and C and forty two point eight point one. Both of those relate to would have an impact in a text amendment for this property with respect to forty one eighty five Black Rock Turnpike. For instance, the access that is proposed would involve under this text amendment that somehow we'd be authorizing you to modify the existing site permit for forty one eighty five Black Rock Turnpike. There's existing parking. There's also provision for the parking associated with with forty one eighty five Black Turnpike might be on your property, not to exceed ten spaces and for a shared driveway. I guess my question is, well, number one, are those three provisions relating to which have an impact on the neighboring property? Are they necessary for, you know, your application for this project?
Hard to say, it's a good question. It's hard to say because the when Chris Smith wrote his letter, he said that he would be, he can give us an easement. But if he said that if he had to go back to the, to your commission, he didn't think there would be any change in the number of parking or anything like that, but he may need to come back on that piece.
So my next question is, are you aware of any case law or, you know, opinions which would allow us in connection with this property at twenty three seventeen Black Rock Turnpike? I'm sorry, wrong one.
I know what you meant.
Yeah. Then in connection with that application to modify our existing site plan for forty one eighty five Black Rock? Or is it, or in fact, do you need forty one eighty five Black Rock to come back and request that we modify their existing site plan to accommodate this text amendment?
I, I don't know whether it's a requirement that they have to come back and see you. I don't know. But what he, what Christmas said was that if it were, if the commission felt that that were needed, then do I need this accessway for this particular project? I think the answer is yes. This particular accessway, I think it was controlled by, I don't know if at the time it was O S T, but, but it's D O T. And that was the location they wanted. So I think even if you approved this particular project, I would have to go back. I would have to go to O S T anyway. On the driveway, on the driveway.
And just one last, I mean, if, apparently there's some sort of defunct wetland on the northwest corner, which would allow for direct access. If conservation were to allow you to put the driveway there, would that be a pseudo, is that something that could be accomplished? Might require moving the building slightly.
Yeah. Again, the only reason that I understand, and I don't know, I can't answer your question definitively. I don't, I do know that the little wetland you're referring to is not a crucial or, or I think they use the word significant. It was been referred as a drainage ditch. But I don't think that's the issue. I think it's the sightlines that are coming from Black Rock Turnpike in either direction that dictates where that entrance and exit is. I think that's why it's there.
Look at it again.
Yeah.
It was just straight downhill from there, so.
Dave Sullivan is on the, on the line. I don't know if you.
Maybe address it, I mean.
Dave, are you there for a sec?
Yes, I'm here.
Articulate it better.
Basically, coming from what you think is the north, but actually it's the west down Black Rock Turnpike. It's a steep downhill approaching the site. Is there any impediment to the sightlines as you approach the site coming from the west?
Yeah, there, there is. And it's not so much the vertical, but it's the horizontal. So as you look to the left and you get further west on the driveway, the curvature of the road takes the sightline through the, the trees and the property line and through private property. And I'm not even sure if you had control of all of that and you cleared it, you would still get the sightlines. So this was evaluated several times, actually. The first time was early on for the medical office. And we could move the driveway a tiny bit, but then we would be looking at an offset intersection. And in this particular case, we'd be looking at two driveways that would be very close together. So, you know, in consultation with D O T, it was, it was basically, this is the location we, we came to. It was opposite the driveway across the street. And the one thing that they had done, they wanted us to make sure is that we would not be impacting the traffic light, which is some, you know, three hundred feet away or so to the east. And we did all of that analysis with D O T. And this is where we landed.
Thank you. Yeah.
So Mr. Sullivan, I'm looking at your two page letter that explains based on the results. And I'm a new commissioner, so forgive me if I've, you know, if you've explained this before. I, my family moved here in nineteen eighty one. I've seen a lot of things happen in that, in this particular area around the Hi Ho Motel with traffic lights and expansion and different solutions. At no point was there ever a massive development proposed in the area empirically. Mr. Sullivan, do you live in this area?
No.
Are you aware of what happens Monday through Friday on exit forty four or the, whatever, the old exit forty four between the hours of probably six AM to ten AM? Are you aware of what happens there?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
What is, what is your awareness tell you? What happens there?
Well, you, you have the commuter traffic getting on and off the parkway depending on the time of day. So in the mornings, you have a lot of traffic getting onto the parkway.
Right, but specifically, what is the pattern at exit forty four? Do you know what happens there?
Well, sure, we've done.
And what is that happens there at, say, seven AM? What is it that happens?
Well, let me explain to you, first of all, the two page letter is a follow up from some detailed studies.
Sir, please answer my question. What happens at seven AM on a Wednesday morning at that exit? I'd just like to have you tell me what happens there.
Sure. I'll give you the specifics. So you're asking about the morning peak hours, correct?
Yes.
Yes. The biggest.
On the southbound side. That's, that's the Merritt Parkway.
The southbound side, so you're coming off the ramp, getting onto Congress. And as you get on Congress, then you take your left and you get out to Black Rock Turnpike. And at the traffic light there, you go left or right or so those are your, your choices. So I'm not sure.
I'll tell you empirically what happens there since it seems to be a little bit vague. At about seven AM ish, and out, give or take an hour or so on either side on a sort of standard weekday. What happens is at exit forty six, people start getting off the southbound because it's basically a parking lot where people are moving at about between, I would say, ten to thirty miles an hour on the good, on a good day. At exit forty four, more traffic gets off. And then what happens is that traffic merges onto Black Rock Turnpike, which is a dangerous turn with a sort of unclear delineation as to what lane you need to be in to be in a, to turn left and then make the immediate right off of Black Rock Turnpike onto Congress. And then there's a steady flow of traffic that goes all the way up Congress Street to Cross Highway into Greenfield Hill. And then that, that traffic turns right, goes along Cross Highway at an alarming rate of speed through a twenty five mile an hour zone, so much so that now there are police officers posted permanently in various locations. And Timothy Dwight is now, is now instituting photo speed traps to stop traffic at a high rate of space, at a high rate of speed in a school zone. Then that traffic turns right onto Reading Road and then turns left and goes right past our house at an alarming rate of speed. There have been three accidents that I've been witness to at that intersection at those hours with huge noise and honking and drama. They actually, there have been three deaths on Reading Road. One of them, my schoolmate of mine's wife was killed because she was hit by a car months after we moved into the house. And then that traffic goes at an alarming rate of speed down Cross Highway, causing a traffic jam all the way to Westport where there are accidents at Bayberry and North Avenue where it interferes with the Staples traffic drop off in the mornings. Then it continues down where there's a massive traffic jam from North Avenue all the way down to Weston Road, Route fifty seven, where the traffic following Waze or Google Maps or what have you merges back into a huge traffic area on Route fifty seven. Then it merges back on at exit forty two to continue south. That is the traffic pattern that happens right now. And there is no one hundred and forty four, one eight hundred and eighty four unit development in this area. How on God's green earth, pardon me, do you explain that given the current state of affairs, which is unacceptable? How logically, empirically, anecdotally, do you explain that this development has no impact on the traffic in that situation when there is another massive development that is being built in the same area that just got approved? How is that possible? Please explain that to me.
Okay. First of all, we, our reports are not anecdotal. Our reports are imperative.
I live here and I'm telling you what has happened.
Let me just ask all commissioners, please try not to be argumentative with the, with the applicant. But go ahead and answer.
So the, the process is. So the, the process is we can empirically evaluate. The, um, operating conditions at all of the movements at a certain, um, location. Uh, proximate to the new traffic. So, for example, we are looking at a number of the, primarily the full interchange. And the intersections that we select to identify the impacts are the ones that are based. On criteria set forth by the Office of State Traffic Administration. So we collect the data. In this case, we added three other developments proximate. To our site and put that into the mix, and we get a series of what we call levels of service. Those levels of service are for each individual lane approach. Some operate better than others, s- and we look to see if we are impacting those levels of service. The next thing we look at is the geometry of the roads, and we look at the length of turn lanes, for example. And look at the vehicles that are queued up, and if what we're proposing is queuing, is, uh, exacerbating those queues. The traffic being generated is based on, um, hundreds of studies of multifamily homes. And we can determine what the traffic will be generated during these morning peak hours and afternoon peak hours. So our charge is to identify what the existing conditions are. And determine if the amount of traffic that we are generating or developing. Uh, because of the, the new uses is changing those conditions. Those conditions could be level of service A, they could be level of service B, they could be level of service C. Whatever these levels of service are, and whatever these queuing conditions are. We want to make sure that we are not exacerbating or creating new negative conditions. We completed that analysis and the analysis is, follows all of industry, um, guidelines. It's already been reviewed, uh, when we did the medical office, for example, and when we did the residential for that. And it's been reviewed by DOT, which is another set of professionals. It's been, um, reviewed by the Office of State Traffic Administration and the Bureau of Traffic Engineering in Newington. So the, these have gone through a detailed empirical evaluation. And, um, you know. I don't know anecdotally what happens three miles from the site, getting off the parkway. I drive the parkway all the time. I grew up in a neighboring town, not this town, not off this interchange. But I am aware of the conditions. I'm aware of all the conditions on the parkway. I'm, uh, aware of, uh, the friction that's created there during morning peak hours and afternoon peak hours. These are not new, and these are not being fixed by this development, but they're not being exacerbated by this development. And that's my charge. So hopefully that tends to give you some. Um, some idea of, of the process that we need to go through when we do this. So it's very rote what a traffic study is, and it, you know, we don't. Um, you know, we'll evaluate other things because site, sites have different. Um, uniqueness that we, um, as we look at it. In this particular case, sightlines was an issue that we had to pay particular attention to. Uh, which in some sites, sightlines are not an issue because you can see for thousands of feet in both directions. So they all have their, their uniqueness, but they all have their basic core, um, empirical evaluation criteria. That is needed.
And I, I'll just say, I, uh, Mr. Haring, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe the. Um, previous, the original traffic study was. Application, correct?
So the application.
I'd be, I mean, then the reason that's important is because you're, we have two commissioners who are not here for that previous application and. And unless, unless that's made part of the record, and I think we should.
Yeah, I think that, I just want to be clear that all the documents we submitted, including the traffic study, are still part of the application. So they didn't go anywhere.
Modified it, because it's a modified application.
Yeah, so we're just modifying, modifying the application. It's not a new application. So my position.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
So I, I will clarify that for this particular packet on the agenda for today. Only included the new information that you provided, so I will supplement that with all the original application materials as well. Um, I just want to provide to the commission, um, our restrictions in terms of timeline. So, um, this application is a modification per state statute. We have a total of sixty-five days to process that application, and that's any public hearing. That you may held to decision. So it's a very quick turnaround. The deadline for this application is actually January twenty-second, um, as we have some time off in December. It's, I anticipate having this scheduled for January thirteenth. However, this may be a circumstance where we need to schedule. If you're not ready to make a decision at that point, and this is a large application, so you may need extra time. This may be, uh, an application where we have to schedule, um, a public meeting. For a decision date between the thirteenth and the twenty-second. Because our next regularly scheduled meeting is the twenty-seventh. So just to make the commission aware.
Thank you. Commissioner Monahan.
So, but the, the date on the traffic study is from this summer. I'd like to know when the traffic study was done. We're now in a post-COVID world. Where people are back to commuting, they're commuting to Stanford four days a week, they're commuting to the city four days a week. That area of town does not have a bus line, that area does not have bike paths, that area does not have, um, a train station nearby. Everyone who lives in that building will be presumably in a car, um, to have a two-hundred-and-thirty-four beds. A hundred-and-eighty-four units at one point, whatever, eight, I'm gonna say, let's say, three-hundred-and-sixty cars. Potentially going through in and out of that, um, property at between six-thirty in the morning and, let's say, nine o'clock. Uh, onto that busy roadway with the existing traffic flows and traffic jams that we have. There's no escape for commuters. Um, the backup in the morning can be an hour to an hour and a half. It currently takes almost two hours to get to Stanford. Um, I think, given that there were thirty-eight, um, accidents on that road at that intersection in three years. It also shows it's already dangerous. That's a very high number, um, and I don't think the other information that you provided, um, is adequate, so.
Just ask one.
Commissioner, come over here.
I just wanted, um, uh, to follow up on, uh, Commissioner Moni- Monahan's very salient points. Do, does anyone know the average in this post-COVID world in a hundred-and-eighty-four units? How many of those people that are living there, the average are going to be commuters versus work-at-home people during rush hours?
Now, I think, uh, I'm not gonna give you that answer off the top of my head, but, um. I think that what these studies that Dave Sullivan refers to. A lot of people have the misconception that if you have, um, a hundred and eighty-four units. That a hundred-and-eighty-four people and their spouses or whomever are gonna leave at the same time in the morning, and that's not what happens.
And that's not my misconception. That's why I'm asking the question. What is the average?
So I think you need to look at the actual traffic study that I'm refer- that he's referring to, not the little supplement. And that'll give you your answer. So, um.
Does Mr. Sullivan know the answer right now?
If he has his traffic study in front of him, that's what I think Emma Line was saying, that she would incorporate all those. Because you weren't here at the earlier hearings, I can appreciate that.
Mr. Sullivan, do you have the answer?
You're on mute if you're speaking.
He may have had it for the more units, because we had it originally proposed, I don't remember, two-hundred-and-four or something, with respectfully and asking.
Is the question, uh, how many people are working remotely?
Yes, on average.
We, we don't know that number, um, and that would tend to reduce the, um, traffic. So the statistics we use are, um, um, reflective of lower. Um, work-from-home conditions. So it's only the, the newer data, which would be somewhat less because of that. So we're looking at a universe of statistics.
More than half?
Oh, no, no. See, the, the rea- the reason, and, um, Attorney Bella started. Talking about it, and, um, we get this question a lot. So, you know, two things happen. One, they talk about a hundred-and-eighty-four units. Sometimes there's, if there's two parking spaces, um, people say, well, there's three-hundred-and-sixty parking spaces. How could there not be three-hundred-and-sixty cars? So, people have different purposes. Everyone in, in every unit is not leaving for work at the same time. Some people, for instance, if you're going to Stanford, you probably want to leave earlier. So you're not sitting in traffic for an hour and a half. Or when I go to Stanford, I work, uh, I, I try to get my meeting set up. I come from Branford, and I try to get my meeting set up later, so I don't have to leave Branford till eight o'clock. So I can get through to Stanford and not have to deal with that, the, the, the real tough conditions. Um, so everybody has a different reason. If you're going to the train station, your timing is based on that. And I always give the example that, um, if I look on my street and it's, it's a. Um, a closed universe because it's cul-de-sac, and there's ten houses on it. And there's probably somewhere between twenty and thirty cars. If I stand at the end of my street, I'm not getting twenty to thirty cars coming in one hour. More than likely, I'm getting, um, five or ten cars. Some people are leaving at a different time because they're bringing their kids to school. Some people are working remotely, some people aren't working at all. They're stay-at-home, um, parents or something like that. So you can't relate the trip generation specifically to the, um, physical characteristics of the site. You have to relate it to, um, past statistics of how these land uses function. And that was the source that I, I, I talked to you about. And that particular source, it goes as far as saying, if it's a single-family, for example. You might get one trip per unit during the peak hour, even though that single-family McMansion has four cars. You're probably, in that one peak hour, you might get one trip. Some houses may have two, some houses may have none. As you go into multifamily, that number goes down. And, um, it goes down because the, um, because the demographics of that. And for exa- for example, if you have low-rise, um, uh, residential. It generates higher or more traffic than a high-rise, um, residential. Because those are just what the statistics tell us. Um, if you're doing an elderly housing, it generates different, has different characteristics. The reason for elderly is, you know, the, the, many of, uh, elderly or retired people aren't working at all. So they're, they may take the same amount of trips on a day, but their trips will be spread out differently throughout the day, so they're not impacting the peak hour. So there's all these things that come into it. So what we have to do is take real-world, um, data. On how this particular type of unit historically generates traffic. And the answer, and the question comes up, has COVID made, um, we get it more in commercial than we do actually in residential. And the question is always, do you get more or less traffic? And the industry doesn't know yet. You get less traffic because of the work at home. But you start getting some of the Amazon that, that adds traffic in the other direction. We think it's close to a wash and maybe slightly less traffic in this post-COVID world. But we haven't been in it long enough to be able to quantify it, but we do know that it's, it's, it's similar and probably a little bit less.
Do you all know the average age range that you anticipate living in this sort of, in this?
I, I don't know that.
That'd be, yeah, I couldn't answer that either.
There was no study done financially to sort of anticipate the kinds of people that would buy these units? When you, when you develop this massive, uh, development for investors to understand.
I'll go by my own personal knowledge. Uh, I built a hundred-unit apartment building in Shelton, and there's no children. That go to school in that particular building.
How many of those hundred, how many of those hundred units generate, uh, rush hour traffic?
Oh, I, you know, I don't, I, I don't, I know it's a ve- very small amount, um, because as Mr. Sullivan has.
Stick to the application, we don't need to talk about.
I'm just saying, though, you can't, yeah, it's, I don't know who's gonna move in there. But generally speaking, um, there's not, in, in this type of development, there's not a lot of schoolchildren, that I can say.
Commissioner Delgado.
My questions relate to the, to the table bulk requirements, and I was looking at the old application and. Um, some of the things you already mentioned about going down from two oh four to a hundred-and-eighty-four units. I was more interested in setbacks, now that there's a change, the front setback going from a hundred down to fifty. Uh, for the conservation easement, going down from five to one. But there's also a change related to stories, uh, allowed. And so I think the original application says there was a maximum of six inclusive of garage parking. The new application modification, uh, references a maximum height of building from average grade at seventy feet, so.
Yeah.
Can you explain kind of the, the reasoning behind the changes, and also if that means that, uh. You'd expect this building to have more stories?
Yeah, um, no, that's a good question. Um, I have, uh, I, I think you should have in your package, um. The building itself, um, I don't know if you have a rendering or architectural elevations that I have. Uh, front and the rear and of building one is, is provided and also for building two. I can. Do you guys have that?
Yeah.
Okay, so on that, I just took a look at, um, what the height was. So I, I, I thought, um, I'd happen to, in this particular case, use the average grade. Because that's, I think, how they use or measure the height of building. Um, as far as floors are concerned or stories, um. There are, I think, a few units, uh, on the top, which are, um, penthouse units, I believe. And then there's one, two, three, four, um, I would call it four full stories. With units. I believe it's a podium-type building, the way I'm looking at this, which means that there would be parking underneath. Building, so the parking's on grade, it's not underground, but, um, building, I believe, uh, is above it. There's also additional parking, as Jason showed you on the site plan, uh, what I would call outdoors or outside park.
I think my rate of, of building one and the, the front elevation. Previous application showed four stories residential, and then either was the, the parking. And so I think when I'm looking at the new application, building one front elevation, to your point, the penthouse units are effectively a fifth floor.
Yes, I would agree with you on that.
Thank you for the clarification. LeBron.
Uh, you have, I couldn't find in the new materials sort of a, a comparison of the one that we denied versus the one that you're doing now. During all the details of this versus the one that, the, the modification versus the original one? Because you verbally told us, and I didn't catch it all.
Oh, I could do it again. I, there's only four things, I think, I think that.
Could you list all the changes so we have it clearly?
The number of buildings reduced from three buildings to two.
Sorry, three to two?
The number of apartments proposed now are a hundred-and-eighty-four apartments.
What was it before?
I thought it was two oh four, I could be.
That's bedrooms, isn't it? Oh, that's, I mean, how, how about bedroom?
No, I, I broke it down, because I know that some of the commissioners like to know the number.
Is it written up anywhere, or is it possible to write it up? I can't tell from this, you know, what.
Sure, I mean, I can write it up.
Okay, and, um, parking spaces changed?
Somehow, I think they got, we got more parking spaces.
Don't ask me why. There's more now than there were?
I have four hundred spaces.
And the impervious surface, do we ever get a description of what the impervious surface is then and now?
Um, I do know the, um. I mean, I have a, you know what, it, it'd probably be a lot easier if I just gave you the summary.
Oh.
Of all the stuff that I have.
Have that?
No, you do not.
Oh, that'd be great.
I'll give it to you. It has all the things that you're asking about, the average height of the building being sixty feet. Um, the height to the elevator, um, it has, I'll, I'll just give it to you, the building's gross area, all that stuff.
You have a copy of that? Email it, I mean.
Yeah, I can, I, I can email it. I, I'll email it to Emmeline.
Also, um, the buildings that remain, the two that remain, are they ident- Also, um, the buildings that remain, the two that remain, are they identical to what they were before or are they changing?
No, they look different, I believe. I think as this gentleman spoke out, some of them have penthouses now and are on the fifth story.
Bigger then or? They must be bigger because you took a whole building out, but there's not that many fewer units. So I assume they must be bigger, maybe?
Or he could have put more, more one bedrooms, I'm not sure.
And I'm just going back to the traffic, uh, report from July. Only, there's only one traffic report, that's July tenth, twenty twenty-five, right? And then they just did a little two-page letter since then.
It was a traffic study done, that was a part of this whole application.
Okay.
And that, I think that's what Dave Sullivan is referring to. He just simply gave us an update based on the modification.
So I'm looking at crash data. Um, fifty-eight accidents in the vicinity, um, from the period January twenty-two to December twenty-four. So that is a three-year period, but now it's already a year old. Is that gonna be updated? I mean, that's, you don't have to, but I'm just wondering if it will be updated. And, um, I'm also looking at, when you look at, um, conditions of traffic volume, since we've been talking about it tonight, um, I'm looking on page, um.
About the old study?
Four of the, the July tenth traffic report, that's the only one we have, right?
Well, you have a new little, you have a new letter that was, yeah.
It doesn't really go to level detail. So when you, on page, um, four of the traffic report, it talks about background volumes. And that's the existing current volume that we've been talking about. And they're saying, I mean, the volume without this development. But so they're doing a traffic background scenario representing projected twenty twenty-seven conditions, assuming this is not built. But it's future conditions if this wasn't built. So then they would compare that to the, when this is built to see if it gets worse, right? So the background conditions generally, in the report, it says, account for traffic from other anticipated developments in the area expected to be completed by twenty twenty-seven. So along with overall regional traffic growth. But they, they don't, I can't find where they specify what those projects are. Cause I, I know by the time this report was done, we had approved forty-four eighty Black Rock Turnpike, which was two buildings, like ninety units, really like a, quite so many bedrooms.
Generally speaking, the.
How do we know what's been included in this? Yeah.
We usually call up Emmeline and she will tell us which, uh, projects have been approved recently. And then that is given to the traffic.
Okay, so this says, the future projects that you're including in your non, you know, your background volume in the future, includes proposed projects not yet built, but it doesn't identify what they are.
Oh, you wanna know?
And, and we don't know if those will be built by twenty twenty-seven, but they might be built by twenty twenty-eight, you know? So we need to know what is included in this background. It might be a lot different, I don't know. And also, um, I think we approved the Congress Street project. I'm not sure, that was thirty-nine units. So also the hi-ho I've heard, I mean, we just expanded their parking lot. Um, I, I've heard that's flipping and that's gonna be, that's kind of speculative. But, um, it seems to me like we need to know what the data is and we don't have the data. So that's.
Excuse me.
Is that gonna, that's not gonna be, has that been updated or?
Yeah, maybe Dave can respond to that.
Yes, yes, uh, please. Um, thank you, Dave Sullivan, again. Um, we have, we did, in the last application, had another, um, submission that I'm holding here. It was August eighteenth and that was a follow-up for just that specific question that came up last summer during the, um, the hearings. We were asked to, uh, provide specifics of all the developments and, um, which had changed from the time we did the original study. So to answer your question, we included, uh, forty-one eighty Black Rock Turnpike, forty-four eighty Black Rock Turnpike and fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street.
Okay, so that is in the material for the prior application that will be consolidated into this one, right? It will be added into this record. And I also note that in that traffic report, there are several areas, now I lost it. Um, several areas where the, um, the, the traffic service level, I guess, will go down from a C to a D or a B to a C or something like that. Has, has any of that changed with your new modification?
Um, it, it, the results will only get better because we have a smaller, um, uh, development now. So theoretically, uh, everything, my guess is the results will be the same, um, B to C. Um, and even, um, C to D, you know, depending on, um, the oper- other operational conditions such as the queuing on a single movement during a peak hour is, is not alarming.
Um, well.
And again, we do have, um, you know, if you'll notice on that table, it says combined, then in parentheses mitigation. We are refining and, um, um, improving all of the timing out there. So we can do certain things to make things more efficient, which we will be, uh, recommending as we go through the OSTA process.
And the queuing analysis also, that was, I only have the Jan, the July one in front of me. But did your August report change the queue, queuing analysis of the different intersections?
The, the numbers are not exactly the same, but the, um, magnitude of the numbers are the same. So for, let me give you an example. If you look on, um, let's take the first, um, um, the, the first intersection. And if we go down to the, um, the intersection, let's take the Black Rock Turnpike eastbound left. We show that we have two hundred feet. And in the other, the important number here is the number after the slash, where we have one eighteen, one thirty-six, one, um, one eighteen. And in this particular case, when we reanalyzed and add all those other developments in, we're still under that two hundred, but the numbers are like one forty, one sixty, those type of numbers. So again, we're looking to see if the, the infrastructure out there is adequate or needs to be changed because it's being impacted and.
When you say two hundred feet, that, that's under the heading, column heading of available storage length? What does that mean?
Correct. That means you have two hundred feet where somebody, um, that's approaching there has a, a turn lane on the road. So, um, let's take the second line where it says the westbound left turn, four hundred and ninety feet. If you're taking a left turn onto the, uh, Parkway Southbound Lan- Ramp, you have four hundred and ninety feet to sit in that left turn lane. And a typical car is about, on average, with spacing before and after it, is about twenty-three feet. So if we just say it's twenty-five feet for every hundred feet, you could fit about four cars. So in five hundred feet, you could fit, uh, five times four or twenty cars in that turn lane. And what we're making sure that whatever that number is, if we are, um, uh, changing that, that average or ninety-fifth percentile queue length, that we're not bringing that to a point where, um, it's more than that four hundred and ninety feet or even approaching that four hundred and ninety feet. Um, you know, we would wanna make, um, um, accommodations for that. So that's the type of things we're looking at. Um, getting back to your original question, the results from the July tenth are consistent with the July, I mean, the August eighteenth. The difference is we have these other developments in it. So our base condition is a little bit higher, but that's, that's really it.
Is the August, uh, report a complete redo of the July report? So we should only be looking at the August report?
The August report is only the level of service part of the original report. So we don't have, we don't have new, um, sightline section. We don't have a new, um, crash data section, things like that. Those we didn't redo. What we did redo is the analytical portion to add in those projects that you spoke of.
And this uses, this again is based on the I T E, um, manual, uh, some of your calculations, which provides data, you know, contributed by traffic consultants around the country. It's not tailored towards, um, the I T manual does not use data tailored towards Fairfield or this particular development.
You know, well, it, no, it's not tailored to the, to the locale. Um, but we have many ti- many, I shouldn't say many times. We have done a couple of things over the years and I've been doing this for far too long to, uh, then I wanna admit. But we've done follow-up studies, number one, in Connecticut of various municipalities, um, because those have been conditioned on us. And we found that I T E is a, 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 a good tracker and a good estimator of, um, most of the land uses that we've gone back and followed up with. And, uh, we've also done, um, traffic counts of, um, built things sometimes, uh, beforehand. A, a traffic count of a similar type facility, um, sometimes afterwards to verify our estimates. And I T E has found to be, um, very good in terms of its estimates.
And the traffic count done here was done in July?
The traffic count was not. The, the base data, the existing traffic counts were done in March of last year, of this year, March of this year.
And trip, I'm trying to find trip generation in here.
Uh, trip generation will be, um, it's, uh.
I'm looking at the July report.
It's a one-liner.
Oh, here we go, yeah. So the trip generation is called, is based on a multifamily housing low-rise. Two hundred and eight units. Now it would go, that would go down. So that has not really been specifically addressed, I don't think, in your updated modified report?
No.
But again, the I T E, this is a very rural area. There's nobody here who won't have a car, right? There's no bus line, there's nowhere to walk. Everyone who lives here will have two cars probably, right?
This is a suburban location, yes.
There, there are one bedrooms and studios, so I'm not sure everyone would have two cars. I'm not sure I agree with that.
Okay. Well, there could be three hundred, I don't know how many, how many parking spaces are there?
Well, again, the, the parking spaces aren't generating the traffic. It's the use that's generating the traffic. Um, let, let me just say one more thing. When we talk about the, the counts, um, before we move forward with our studies and we collect our base data, we vet that data with the, um, uh, Bureau of Policy and Planning at ConDOT. They're the ones that are the local clearinghouse for traffic data. And they compare it to historic information they have and trend data they have. And they give us their blessing on the data we are using before we use it. Um, and that's, that's important. Um, it's, it's not, in this particular case, March is a very typical time of year to count. So, um, we're not as concerned then. But if we did a study and we had a, because of timing, we had to do our counts in, uh, January, for example. We would make our own estimates of how January, which is lower than normal, how we would factor that up to make it a typical time of year. And, um, DOT or the Bureau of Policy and Planning, we would rely on them to review our assumptions and review our base data. So, um, and that, that same group, um, relies on I T E for our estimates of, um, traffic. So we'll, we'll go through all of this in, um, uh, again, um, assuming, um, this gets approved. Um, we'll go through all of this again with all the departments through OSTA. So they'll be looking at, um, drainage impacts on a state highway. They'll be looking at, um, driveway geometry again. They'll be looking at our, our estimates of counts and our estimates of site traffic. They'll be looking at our sightlines. So they give, our application goes to, you know, half a dozen or ten different departments at DOT, which will fully vet our analysis and, um, and, and the information that, that is required to be provided.
Although DOT does not replace the review that we do, obviously.
No, of cour- of course not, of course not. As a matter, as a matter of fact, they won't act until you do. So they will not be presumptive and say, oh yeah, this is fine, um, because they don't wanna usurp your decision power.
I just wanna remind the commission, it's ten after nine. We have a ten o'clock curfew and, uh, a limited timeframe, uh, to close this public hearing, I know. Um, Attorney Green is also here and, and we can expect him to speak. So I just encourage everyone to be efficient with your remaining questions so we could try to get to public comment this evening. Uh, Commissioner Monahan.
Um, have you done a study in the terms of the number of, uh, delivery vehicles that will be coming in and out, trucks and the like?
Yeah, the delivery vehi- vehicles are baked into the statistics. And as I mentioned, that's, uh, something we're evaluating, the industry is evaluating how much the delivery vehicles are impacting peak hours versus how, how work from home and virtual work or remote work is counterbalancing that. And in general, the, um, um, the Amazon and the delivery type vehicles are not taking place during the peak hours. Part of that is, um, on purpose. They don't wanna be traveling and doing, not as efficient to be doing their stuff during peak hours. Um, part of it is, um, uh, just the timing of, of when those things happen. But again, um, we, we do look at it in terms of geometry. And I think Jason talked a little bit about that, where we do the, um, the, uh, auto turns and, um, tra- travel patterns of the delivery vehicles. So he did it for fire engines and he did it for the delivery vehicles to make sure that the design, um, accommodates them. So, um.
Commissioner Capozzi.
Uh, just a brief question. Would you, would you be willing, uh, to consider having a commuter bus? Like they do in New York City with large developments that are on the, on the sort of rivers that are not near public transportation hubs? Would you be willing to consider having commuter buses during peak transportation hours that take people from the development to a train station and home again and to Fairfield Center?
I like that idea. Um, it's a good suggestion. I, I have some clients that have, uh, restaurants. There's very limited parking and they do a similar concept of, I'll, I'll call it more like a valet, but it's the same thing as you're suggesting. So, um, I think that's a good suggestion.
Can I add?
Commissioner Saber.
Can I add to that? Look, I, I work in Stanford for a large cable company.
Can you, can you speak up a little?
I, I work in Stanford for a large cable company. I live in Stratfield. I go to Fairfield, Black Rock, and I commute to Stanford. I would assume that, all right, I'm making an assumption, but the population of that one hundred and eighty-four units, there's a percentage of them that either have to work in New York City or perhaps Stanford. Right?
Yes, probably both, yep.
Commissioners' recommendation to give them an opportunity to get to a train station versus getting on the highway, which is the Merritt Parkway, which is a total nightmare. And or ninety-five, cause I, I watch it from the train and I just love my life on the train. So I, I'm just saying that post-COVID, chances are that anybody in that unit who has to not work from home four days a week, like I do, I only get to work from home one day a week, is going to have to go to the office at least one day a week, post-COVID.
I agree with you.
So, I, I, I just, I, I don't know the demographics of who's moving into this.
Generally speaking, they're younger working people.
Yeah.
They're not, not, yeah, they're young working people, most of them, most of them.
Right.
There's a few. That's the largest demographic.
But that could alleviate some of the concerns about traffic.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, I think I've, I've covered it. Um, I'd be glad to, uh, get additional information into, uh, to Commissioner Braun and, um, have Emmeline put everything, because some of the commissioners didn't have the ability to see some of the materials beforehand. So, um, I don't have a problem doing that.
Okay. Everyone good to go to public comment?
Yeah.
All right. Let, let's, I'll conclude the initial presentation. Um, we will turn to public comment, uh, beginning with Attorney Green. But if anyone is joining us remotely who wishes to be heard on this item, please sign in in the chat, uh, or. Please sign in in the chat uh, or put the raise hand button. Um, otherwise, we won't see you or be able to recognize you. Attorney Green.
Good evening, um, members of the, Chairman, members of staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society and Greenfield Hunt. By way of background, uh, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, once again, as I indicated. Uh, at the initial. Application regarding forty-two twenty-one uh, is dedicated to preserving and protecting the National Register listed. Historic district in National Scenic Byway, that is the Merritt Parkway, Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society is. Uh, community organization dedicated to uh, preserving and protecting the historic character. Uh, of the Greenfield Hill area Fairfield and is an advocacy group. On issues affecting Greenfield Hill and the town as a whole. And Greenfield Hunt is a, a community of homes on fifty-six acres, a portion of which abuts the subject property. McDonald is here this evening. So uh, we urge the commission to deny the application. Uh, I have a. I, I scratched a lot of notes uh, to my originally organized presentation based on the questions, many good questions. But my first question is, I note that now we have fully infiltrated the whole application. I note it was a document submitted by the applicant. I think there are some other documents that are going to be submitted by the applicant. Is that? Is that, I'm not sure.
It's, it sounds like um, Attorney Bellis is going to provide a summary as requested. By Commissioner Braun that compares the prior application and this application.
Okay, so I guess my question initially is where we are in the app, in the hearing process. Is it? The intention of the commission then to hold this open or continuation of the public hearing based on the submission?
That's not the intention. If we need to, we will. The, the, I mean, I think the intent is to. Close the hearing as soon as we can practically because of the time constraints we have on us to. Uh, to act on the application.
We're all for that. Uh, my clients and I are all for that. Having said that, uh, not sure. I, I want to be careful about submissions. I'm not sure what was submitted. Is it just a comparison of the two? Applications or?
So what was requested was a comparison of the two, which uh, I guess it's not really. Um, the previous application uh, is part of the record. It just, it sounds like uh, my understanding is. The materials are just not in the folder, but it's the same applicant, the modification of the application. So those. Everything that was in the record from the initial application is currently around in the record.
All right, and the document that was submitted is just notes or what? It was a document submitted this evening?
It wasn't actually submitted as of yet.
Oh, maybe, maybe I'm making things too complicated. I'll just give it in now. It's a summary of the uh. Modification.
But I think what, I think what Commissioner Braun was requesting was the, the prior application. A summary of the prior application with the modification application comparison. So it just, it just summarizes that prior application in conjunction with the information that Attorney Bellis has today.
May I make a suggestion so that we can close the public hearing tonight? Perhaps staff could compare the two text amendments and just highlight those. Changes that there's no new material submitted. We will accept the fact that. The previous application is of public record. It's available on presumably still on the town website. And that way we can close this out tonight and not get involved in it.
Previous material is, I, I, if you, I don't know what needs to be done. Uh, to, to merge the folders, but the folder is available and accessible with all the original material. Um, so I would, I'll defer to, I'll defer to staff on the ability to, to do that, but yeah, the, otherwise I think. There shouldn't be new information that requires holding the hearing open for that.
So I would urge staff then, I would urge the applicant not to submit any paper documents tonight so that there's no. So that it's not of record. It would have to be posted. The public would have an opportunity to review it. I would urge the applicant to withdraw it and staff, if you look at the two text amendments.
Just a summary. It's just a summary of what he, it's just his notes of what he verbally provided.
I think I would just say if that's just provided to staff but not to the commission.
Okay.
Look at it. I don't, if we submit new materials to the commission.
I don't think a, if it's strictly a summary of changes from one text amendment to the new one, I don't view that as new. Information that needs to, to keep a hearing open. There's additional information that's presented, that's submitted. That's, that's a different story.
I just can't evaluate it at this moment. That's, I'm going to state that for the record.
Can I just clarify? Are we talking about changes in the project scope or changes in the verbiage of the text amendment or both? I don't know what the changes in the verbiage in the text amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's an open, they're in the record, so technically they're there for us to evaluate. It would be a matter of convenience for us to have a summary, but, but it's not new information because the.
So is the commission accepting documents tonight or is the commission not accepting?
If the staff, uh, the commission will accept a staff summary of the changes to. One to the other.
I'm, I'm all for that, but not.
And does not, and I don't consider that new information.
Documents submitted by the applicant.
I ca- if, if he, if the applicant chooses to submit something, I'll evaluate that. Um, but as of yet, nothing's been submitted.
Okay. That understanding, then let's go. Uh, I appreciate it and I don't need to be, I just want the records to be clear.
May I also clarify as well, the entirety of the prior record includes your prior seminal as well as my assumption.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But uh, so look, uh. Couple of points. Uh, my clients and I urge the commission to deny the application as modified. This is not an appropriate, safe location for the proposed development. I have, just based on the comments by the commission, I would just like to clarify a few points. First of all, this was, and this is reflected in the applications, this was a single site. This whole, the forty-two twenty-one and forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike were. One site. It was a single piece of property. New Way Associates, which is referenced on some of the site plans that you'll see in the original application and tonight, divided that property to create. Two properties, forty-one eighty-five and forty-two twenty-one. So. It was a voluntary decision by the owner of this property to create this particular geometry at that point on Black Rock Turnpike. So when we talk about difficulties with the driveway or difficulties with accessing this site. That was purely created by a single property owner dividing this property. Who was a predecessor in title, I guess, to the applicant. So let's put that out there. Next, the applicant has chosen this procedure where the applicant, instead of going to wetlands first. As one might expect with a conventional map and text amendment. Has come to this commission with this application on a conceptual basis only. Asking this commission to amend your zoning regulations and your zoning map to create this zone. I've referenced this before in this application and other applications. I, while I recognize there is case law on this, this presents a difficult precedent because. And I believe I've referenced in the past, and maybe I can't remember whether it was this application or fourteen seventy-seven. Sort of what I will call the debacle in Westport where the commission passed a. Major uh, rezoning of the Sagatuck area uh, two years ago. And then two years later, the applicant appears with the hamlet, as you've read about in the paper. If you make massive, massive uh, somewhere between two hundred and fifty and four hundred million dollar development. And what the commission adopted as a regulation and what the commission ultimately saw in the application. There was clearly a difference between from a planning perspective, what the commission conceived of and what it looked like when it came to reality. My, the reason I've raised that is because here, the applicant is walking in with this very vague representation of a conceptual. Site plan and asking this commission under eight dash thirty G. To adopt a regulation change and a map change to allow this based on this sort of conceptual plan. I envision after, if the commission were to. To do that. And I cannot emphasize that this application should be denied enough, but if you do that. I predict in the future, the applicant is going to walk in with a site plan and say, hey, you adopted this regulation. And this regulation, the standards set forth in forty-two twelve say that if I give you a plan that meets these. Very few standards. It says standards for site plan approval, forty-two point twelve. Once the tech zone, text amendment or zone change is approved, the application process continues to a final site plan submission. Even if there's a moratorium. The final site plan shall be certified by a civil engineer or land surveyor and shall be submitted subsequent to the text amendment and zone change. That's after this application and filed with the Planning and Zoning Department. The final site plan shall be substantially the same as the conceptual site plans unless the wetlands commission requires changes. So what that means is. Wetlands may be undertaking some of your function because wetland says, oh no, we want it like this. Because of our concern on the resources. So the applicant, because they've gone about this, this way. The applicant is saying to you, this is what we're going to build, but if wetlands wants something else, we're going to build that. But once the applicant walks in with a site plan for these standards. Says the driveway shall be asphalt or concrete, the stoops and walks shall be brick. The mailboxes and trash containment areas shall be effectively located and shielded. A unit mix shall allow for some uh, Americans with disabilities, units ten percent. Fire safety, they're constructed in accordance with the fire uh, code of the state of Connecticut. Storm jet drainage is prepared by a professional engineer. And a lighting plan in effort to mitigate or lessen building impact from Merritt Parkway and W N C A approval. We walk in with that. You are going to be hard pressed to deny that site plan. So that's item one. So they are setting themselves up for success on their site plan submission. That's item one. I'm, I'm sorry.
A, a quick question and you may not have. Um, you both cited case law that um, would support this process. Do you have any case law that would distinguish this situation from the case law they're citing that would allow us to deny this?
Yes, I'm going to provide that shortly.
Thank you, sir.
The answer is yes. The reg, the statutes do say that you can file. I side with the town attorney on the notion of this conceptual site plan. And I would suggest that this site plan and this application and in particularly. Particular, this re-submission does not begin to meet standards and provide this mission with the information that you need. Even under eight dash thirty G, which says public health and safety concerns are basically. To kind of whittle it down, that you can only deny that application filed under that statute. Where it invokes public health and safety. Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you about that. And I'll provide you with some information on that, but uh. But you, again, you don't have that information. What I'd like to do just briefly is I have um, Wes Haynes. Uh, here and uh, we'll talk about uh, the impacts on the historic resource. Under public health and safety, the other concern that this commission can consider are environmental impacts. Adverse environmental impacts and historic resources are viewed by the law as falling within environmental resources. So uh, Mr. Haynes, can you hear me? Are you present?
Yes, I am.
Can you just briefly uh, tell the commission or describe your education, training and experience?
Sure, my uh, uh, good evening, uh, commissioners. My name is Wes Haynes. I'm a resident of Stanford, Connecticut. Uh, I have a forty-five year old, a forty-five year um, experience in the field of preservation. Working for architectural firms and nonprofits um, with uh, old resources. And um, uh, my concerns with this uh, this revision is that. It ignores um, the concerns we raised um, in the first application. Uh, about the height of these buildings, which um, are now taller than they were before.
Mr. Haynes, can I just jump in? Um, at the time of the original hearing on this application. You testified to a certainty of one hundred percent that the proposed development that was proposed in the initial application. Would uh, irretrievably adversely impact the historic character. Of the resource that is, the historic resource that is the Merritt Parkway. Is there anything in this amendment? In this revision that changes your opinion of the proposed development?
No, uh, this is even worse than the uh, the previous application.
And why is that?
Uh, the buildings are higher and um, as we noted in the last application. Uh, the building that it was uh, in the previous application identified as building number one and in this application is. Uh, identified as building number two. Um, uh, is relatively close to the edge of a, a cliff that drops off on the parkway. It's going to be highly visible from the parkway and it's now even more visible as presented in the revision. Um, and it, uh, we were, we felt that the building that's now labeled number one. Uh, the site of that building might be manageable by planting it out and not making it visible. Uh, from the parkway, visible from the parkway. Um, it is now taller and we can't really say that it wouldn't be visible from the parkway. So um, it's just a larger project now that um, that is, intrudes upon. The main reason of the parkway's significance, which is its scenic value. Um, it is, uh, it was designed as a scenic resource uh, to get people from Fairfield County to support it. Um, and it was a brand new highway. Um, and uh, it has just been, the scenic quality of it has just been extensively. Renewed over the past twenty-five years by a multi-million dollar investment by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Uh, and we are, we are intent on preserving that uh, for future generations.
So, uh, all right, uh, so once again, and we will incorporate. Uh, Mr. Haynes's remarks from the initial hearing and that way we can uh, not take up too much time. Uh, Mr. Haynes, I don't know, there's anything else you'd like to add at, at this point?
But just, just one brief thought that uh, buildings and structures and landscapes as the parkway is. Are uh, listed on the National Register for various reasons. Some because they're associated with historic people, some because they're associated with historic events. Or some because of their architectural or aesthetic value. And the, the parkway is unusual in Connecticut in that it is the largest. National Register district that is designated on the basis of its aesthetic value. And uh, this, this uh, development is just simply uh, unnecessarily intrudes on that. Uh, that aesthetic value and will uh, really harm uh, in perpetuity. The quality that, that makes this property significant.
And you are not saying that the site can't be developed, is that?
Absolutely not. The, the site could be more responsibly developed uh, with affordable housing, with a hundred percent affordable housing. Uh, but um, but just not these very, very large buildings that are widely overscaled. For this part of, of Fairfield.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if the commission has any questions at this moment. Okay. Thank you. So, I just wanna take one minute and make this comment. Experts testify based on their education, training, and experience. I'm involved in so many cases in the Superior Court, or so many matters that come before this commission where there are experts with conflicting opinions. You see it all the time. It happens all the time. But one thing I'm sure Attorney Bellis and I can agree upon is that this commission plays the role in assessing the testimony of the experts and deciding what testimony you want to accept, what testimony you want to reject. You might reject the testimony of all experts. But this commission is the finder of fact, and the credibility, and, and the facts testify to experts. And, you know, I give a thousand examples of how experts have been right, experts have been wrong. You know, beginning, the Titanic could not sink. I mean, there's been thousands of examples. And I'm sure you can think of a lot of them where experts had opinions. So, I'd wanna just talk to you about the traffic report. We had submitted today a letter to the commission from Simcoe Engineering. I did not bring enough copies for the whole commission. I have a few, for those of you who don't have laptops and would like a paper copy.
But it is in the folder?
Yes.
Under?
December ninth.
I've got four here, anyone, for those of you who need it. But I just wanna emphasize a few things. First of all, when Mr. Sullivan did his original report, you may recall, going back to when this application evolved, it was only at the, the last hearing, on the last application, that the applicant came in with this new idea, with this wraparound, wraparound entrance into the property. And that was in response to our traffic expert saying that a truck could not safely enter this site, truck traveling eastbound on Black Rock Turnpike. So, in response to that, you'll recall that Mr. Edwards had presented a drawing that showed that, sort of this encroachment onto forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike. And that continues to be the drawing, or the approach, that this applicant has, is taking. We presented this letter. I note that the applicant has not, has not provided a left-turn analysis for a vehicle or truck traveling westbound on Black Rock Turnpike, left-turn analysis. We question whether that can be executed safely into the site. But you have this letter from Mr. Simcoe, and I will just, I will just highlight, first of all, he finds that obviously will affect the special permit or site plan for forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike. This came out on your questioning. There is no question that any alteration of the use of forty-one eighty-five would require an amendment of the special permit, which was granted for that application when Hartford Healthcare came about. And you may recall that there was a medical building approved. It was then a large eight dash thirty G development. We took an appeal during, and I represented the Ronins who lived just, just west of the Hi-Ho, I wanna say north, but west of the Hi-Ho. They took an appeal. In the course of that appeal, we reached a settlement with the, with the applicant where they agreed to put in the Hartford Healthcare building with certain improvements. And that's how we got to this juncture and this layout of the site. But, uh, so Hartford Healthcare is here. It was a special permit application. We came before the commission. There was a special permit. I think it was modified. I can't remember. Anyway, there's a special permit that is required for that use. Under our regulations, under Connecticut law, if you have a special permit use, you have to apply for an amendment of the special permit, which goes through the same process as a special permit application. So, that is for sure. So, there's this proposal to, and I'll just make one other editorial comment at this moment. This letter that has been waived about as permission or the suggestion that Fairfield Medical LLC is agreeable to an easement, this letter is basically a nullity. What it says is, yes, we are consenting to granting an easement. We are consenting to giving an easement. But it's subject to, first of all, final improvement by TPZ of this application. It's subject to approval by TPZ of a modification of our special permit. It says, "Such permits as we need to modify our plans and approve." But then, the last thing it says is, "And subject to final review and approval by Fairfield Medical of final plans, easement language, construction sequence, and related matters." So Fairfield Medical keeps their options open, because what they say is, "We can decide at the end that we don't wanna do this." So, this application, this letter really provides nothing other than an openness to a dialogue, I suppose, but it's of no legal effect. Why? So, now there's this application that involves a portion of forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike to access the site. Mr. Monteleone, in this letter dated December ninth, says, "First of all, this is gonna approve that, affect that approved special permit." So that's for sure. And you can see, there's this kind of silly layout, but I'll get into that. Can you, I, share?
Yes, I would like to, Provost.
Attorney Green, how much longer?
I'm gonna try to really move it, because I know, I wanna give Attorney Bellis an opportunity to endorse my remarks. So, so you'll see this layout. You'll see this layout. And first of all, as we've indicated, there's been no left-turn analysis. So the first thing Mr. Monteleone says is, "These three spaces," and I'll use my cursor right here, "these three spaces are incredibly unsafe." They are unsafe, because they're in such a bad spot entering this site, that he says that this creates a dangerous situation for parked vehicles. So that's one. Two, you can see where my cursor is, that this truck coming into this site, once it comes around this turn, due to the geometry, it's in the left lane. It is in the left lane. So, you cannot access the site. And he said, "Cars, trucks, and exiting vehicles cannot pass safely at the same location." He says, "There is minimal and insufficient clearance between the parking aisle of Hartford Healthcare and the proposed site access driveway. There's minimum and insufficient spacing between the parking aisle, access driveway, and the intersection of Black Rock Turnpike. Once again, there was no auto-turn analysis for vehicles entering the site from westbound." And his conclusion is that the revision does not satisfactorily address the safety concerns for the proposed development that were identified. As a result, it's our professional judgment that this development would create health and safety risks for the traveling public. It's dangerous. It is signed off by Mr. Monteleone, who is not an engineer in the state of Connecticut, but he is with Simcoe Engineering. And it is signed off on by Mr. Sidiqui, who is a professional engineer. So, it's both of their letters. So, this is by a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. The applicant cannot demonstrate, and Mr. Sullivan testified unequivocally at the last hearing, that they could not move the driveway further up the hill, further away from the parkway, further to the west, however you wanna put it, because there is not a safe sightline. He reiterated that tonight. Once again, this was the applicant's own making this situation. You've referenced the concerns from, by the Inland Wetlands Commission. The applicant cannot show safe ingress and egress from Black Rock Turnpike, nor have they, they haven't demonstrated any, well, I'm gonna hold on that comment. I've pointed out that the site plan may be modified. They cannot provide safe access to this property without access over the property of a third party. They have not demonstrated that the special permit can be modified. There's no demonstration for this commission that there's adequate parking at forty-one eighty-five so that they can give up any spaces, or that they can move spaces. In this case, they're talking about moving spaces onto another property, which they cannot do. So, basically, you can't, they, the applicant, even conceptually, cannot demonstrate that there is safe access to the site, even on a conceptual basis. So, there's, I think, if that answers your question, there's expert testimony that ingress and egress for a hundred and eighty-some-odd units, two hundred and, or, two hundred and eighty-four bedrooms. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One hundred and eighty-four units, two hundred and thirty-four bedrooms. Which, how many cars are gonna be on this site? How many hundred cars are gonna be on this site? You cannot achieve safe access. The regulations do not allow you to put parking for the special permit use on the other property. So, twenty-one eighty-five, forty-one eighty-five's parking spaces cannot be on forty-three twenty-one's under your regulations. So there's that problem. It's contrary to your regulations. And basically, this site plan just simply doesn't work. The applicant has chosen this path at this moment. They've chosen this procedure. And this commission can't, in the fair exercise of your jurisdiction as planners and as zoners, endorse a text amendment that cannot reasonably demonstrate safe access to the site, and also one that impacts historic resources, which once again are recognized. I don't know if you have any questions?
Pierce not, so.
Thank you for your time and patience.
We'll go to the rest of the public. I know, I know we have someone signed in. We will start, as usual, with anyone in the room who wishes to speak. We are gonna limit public comment to three minutes per person. First come, first served, so come on. State your name, address for the record.
I'll be very brief. My name is Bruce McDonald. I live at seventy-four Hamilton Court in Fairfield, Connecticut. For those of you who may not aware, that's Greenfield Hunt. One of the things that Attorney Green is representing us. Greenfield Hunt has a hundred homes, just about. The entrance and exit is one road, Beddington, about a thousand yards north of the entrance to this Hartford Healthcare. If you exit there in the morning, the traffic is backed up almost to Beddington. So if patients are trying to get into Hartford Healthcare, and Hartford Healthcare, that is an office building in conjunction with Memorial Sloan-Kettering, so predominantly, those patients are cancer patients. They have to cross the traffic that's closed. And if you add this other entrance for a hundred, or eighty, a hundred and eighty-four units, the amount of cars going in there is gonna be unsafe for those patients. There's already two hundred and fifty cars coming and going out of Hartford Healthcare. And add another two hundred, and delivery trucks. It's an unsafe situation, particularly for the patients coming and going. The other clarification, you may not be aware, but there is a letter from Fairfield Medical LLC, that is NARDA, that's not Hartford Healthcare. Hartford Healthcare leases that building. So Hartford Healthcare rarely has no option to refuse that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room who wishes to be heard? There you go, Tom. Yeah, go on.
Thank you. Board, my name is Diego Delon. I live at the property of forty-three twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike, which was formerly owned by Edward and Sherri Lane, Jason to the property that, that we're talking about tonight. I urge you guys to reject, deny this process as well. In addition to the traffic concerns and the wetlands concerns, I'd like to just go on record in saying that the water, that the water runoff there is significant. Greenfield Hunt was built probably in the eighties. And from what I,
Late nineties.
Late nineties. And from what I understand, the wetlands, the area behind the property in question, forty-two twenty-one, was used to be very dry. Kids used to play in the woods there all the time. And when Greenfield Hunt was built, water runoff started happening. From what I understand, my backyard is constantly wet. I believe there's underground water that's constantly pouring through there. The water runs probably around my property. And during the rainy season, it's, it's constantly soggy. It's hard to, it's hard to, like, grow my grass, et cetera, et cetera. This is very, being very selfishly speaking here. But we've regraded the backyard many times, only to have the property continue sinking. I just think that, in addition to the other concerns of traffic and all the stuff that I'm not gonna, I don't wanna bore you guys with, because you've heard enough of it. But the, the water runoff and, you know, the adjacent reservoir as well, concerns that are, that are concerns from the rest of the people. Concerns of, of stay there with the, with the water. I don't know how that's gonna affect, you guys can do all the tests you want. Water will manifest itself years and years down the road. It's never something that's just there at the beginning. You'll, it'll just come back in five, ten years later, and just change direction. You can't control the way it goes. Right now, it ends up in my yard. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. Let's all, thank you.
Sorry, I have plenty to speak. Okay, we'll turn to folks who are joining remotely. If you haven't already signed in and wish to be heard, please sign in and chat, or press the raise hand button.
Solas Davis.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm very impressed with the new commissioners and their attention to detail and the questions that they're asking. I raised my hand before we heard from Attorney Green. Something that I'm very concerned about with all of these developments that are being presented. I was under the impression that in Fairfield, you could not just submit conceptual plans. You cannot make decisions if you do not have all of the information. I don't care what happens in Shelton. I don't care what happens in Trumbull. They have their own ways of doing things. And I consider their ways, the correct ways, because they do require the developers to submit actual plans so that we, again, are not faced with someone coming in and getting the zone changed approved, and then they turn around and do whatever they want. You're all sitting here. You all have questions. Questions that Attorney Bellis couldn't answer. We need to get actual plans. You can't make decisions based on half of the information. You need to have all of the information in front of you. Something that has been mentioned at other meetings, because I've been attending meetings since February regarding another development. We need to have, you need to have your own experts. You have people that come up with conflicting information. One attorney is going to have his expert come up and give information, and then the next attorney comes up, and it's conflicting. One of the commissioners today, I think, was alluding to the fact of we need real-time traffic studies. We're all very aware of the traffic problems we have in Fairfield. And I know that, according to eight thirty G, traffic is not a safety issue. When you see the number of accidents, it's a safety issue. Again, thank you for all of your thoughtfulness, giving all of this consideration. But please, we've gotta come up with some firm rules here. Are we going to accept conceptual plans? Or are you going to require people submitting actual architectural drawings? And I think this starts with the Town Planning and Zoning Office. They shouldn't be accepting things if we do not have all the information. How are you expected to be able to make a decision? How are you expected to be able to make a decision if you do not have all of the information? Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else?
We do not.
One more time, if you wish to be heard on this item, please sign into chat. During no one else, I'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. Attorney Bellis, any rebuttal?
Oh, truly, only 1:30.
You're a dick.
Four minutes.
I can talk fast. Let me start by saying, most of you know, we don't go by the Fairfield regulations, what they may require for text amendments. We go by state law. And I've given you in the package before that it's right in the statute. You can use conceptual site plans. It's in the regulations. And I gave you the case of Eureka, and they also make reference to it in 131 Beach Road. Commissioner asked Attorney Green, well, what is the case law that you have that says you can't use conceptual site plans? That silence that you hear is the answer he gave you. He doesn't have one. So there is no case law.
Just to clarify, I asked if there was case law that distinguished this particular situation from the broader Eureka case.
131 Beach, Eureka, the state statute and local, and the state regulations allow conceptual site plans to be permitted if your zoning commission allows, if your zoning commission wants it. In other words, I could give you a text amendment and have no site plans, no conceptual site plans, none at all. And that would be upheld by the court. I don't think that's a good way to practice, and I don't do that. But I do believe that if a town doesn't require conceptual site plans and someone submits an 830G text amendment and zone change, I would believe that the courts would be compelled to approve that. I have given you conceptual site plans because they're helpful. I've also put in the text amendment as best I could to say that plans that we're giving you are not bait and switch. They have to be substantially the same. So we're proposing two buildings. There better be two buildings, not one Empire State Building. Now, if a building has to be moved six inches, I still think that's substantially the same. It's just that, you know, maybe wetlands wanted something moved slightly. So that's why I put the word substantially same in there. That was to protect you guys so that there isn't any kind of bait and switch when we come in with the final site plans. Thing I wanted to point out is that I got this Simcoe letter today, December 9th. It's dated December 9th. So I just wanted to, in two minutes, briefly tell you why I don't believe it's valid. Talks about, let's talk about the three spaces that were in that turnaway. You're allowed to make reasonable changes as a commission. And I would suggest that you just tell me, remove those three spaces. They can't go there. I have no objection to that. And my opinion, I'm not going to bring those three spaces in here on my final site plan. So they don't have to be there. They're not going to be there. And I'm going to have them removed. Okay? He talks about the curve in the access. You can't have an SU30 truck. Jason Edwards showed you that you could. It's on sheet 2.2. He said that there is minimal insufficient clearance between the parking aisle and it's not wide enough. The driveway aisle is 31 feet wide. The Fairfield only requires 24 feet. So that's not an accurate statement. It's incorrect. He says that there was no auto turn analysis done with the SU30 vehicle. Well, it was, and Jason Edwards showed you. That's on sheet number 2.2. That is incorrect. He says there was no auto turn analysis with 100-foot aerial fire truck. I listened to Jason Edwards.
Sir, can I ask you a substantive issue, which is what happens if you don't get the easement from the medical building?
If I don't get the easement for the medical building, then I would have to show this commission that a fire truck could get in there without it. I'm not sure that I could. Thank you. So I just wanted to point out that that Simcoe report is not accurate and that we had testimony, in other words, concerning the points. Oh, the last thing was, I'm sorry, I think I may have brought this up. The Merritt Parkway. The Merritt Parkway does not have any sightline restrictions or easements. There's nothing in there that says that you're not allowed to build anything outside of the right-of-way. Their right-of-way is what's the historic resource, the bridges, trees along the edge of the roadway, the grassway, all that. That is what the historic area is. They can't say to you as a commission, oh, you can't build anything in Fairfield because we might see it. Or you can't build anything in Stratford because we could see it from the Merritt Parkway. That is beyond their historic resource. The historic resource, what's in that right-of-way between, which is known as the Merritt Parkway. You will not see any evidence in this record that there are any sightline restrictions or easements on buildings outside of the Merritt Parkway. So the case law, there's case law in that. A lot of these cases had to do with people having, making complaints if they're along the beach, hey, I can't see the water. And the judge would say, well, do you have a sightline restriction that they can't build their house blocking your view? And if the answer is no, you can build it. So I appreciate that they're doing everything they can to make the Merritt Pleasant to look at because I sit in that traffic. And it's not an effective highway. Let's put it that way. Last thing I would say is you are allowed to make reasonable changes. I'm going to be coming back anyway with the final site plan. That's going to be substantially the same as the one I showed you tonight. And I think that the case laws is on my side as far as allowing a text amendment and a zone change under 8-30G. And then coming back with the final site plan for you to review using the same standards, 830G standards. I disagree with Joel Green's analysis that it's an administrative rubber stamp. It's not. It's not what the case is saying. So you'll have a second crack at this when we come in with the final site plans. And that will be as soon as we get the wetlands to give us an approval. And we'll be back shortly.
Commissioner Levy, text amendment aside. Your plan is to come back with a site plan, but that's for 4221 Black Rock and 4267. Are you planning to come back also with a site plan for 4185 and a modification?
That's an easement that we're seeking.
Yeah, but it's still a modification of what we've already approved.
Yes. And what I understand is that reasonable changes can be made to special exceptions as long as they come in to see the zoning commission. I'm not even sure you need a public hearing on that.
We got time to look.
We've got time to look. How about if you need one? Yes, then you could have one.
Any other final questions?
You know, talking about, you know, Jill, did you have any more information to provide? Because he said you had information and there was silence.
We can request additional information.
Okay. It seemed to me that there was some pending information out there, and I just wanted to know if I could question.
Anything else from you, Attorney Bellis?
I'm three minutes old.
Okay, thank you. I will just add before I close the public hearing, while the lack of a site plan may have implications as far as how this commission weighs the applications in defense of our staff, it's not required. And so they are following their obligations and accepting the application. But thank you, Attorney Bellis. Thank you, members of the public. I will close the public hearing on this item. End up being the last item to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all very much. Good to see you all. I hope I get to see you again.